If you could take a seat, call the order. We have a quorum. Could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Sticks.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitman. Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Thank you, Weston, and welcome, everyone, to the January 30th, 2024, meeting of the Ojai City Council, special meeting. Weston, would you please say the pledge for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mayor, council staff, community. Please place your right... Oh, our American flag is at the back of the room here. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Weston. And before we begin, if I could get quiet, please? We'll wait for silence. Thank you. I would just like to say, welcome to our new city manager. We are so happy to have you. And you started yesterday, and here you are today. So, welcome, Ben Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Glad to be here.
Really wonderful step for Ojai, so thank you. And before we begin, I also want to say a big thank you to Rick Rain, our unhoused service coordinator, who put together incredible activity on Saturday, putting together some tents and some storage units for our unhoused population. And it was such a beautiful example of different groups from our community coming together, working together for the common good. Thank you, Carl Aloneta, for helping get that together, our assistant city manager. And just gonna read a list of all the groups that were there on Saturday morning, helping out. Ojai Presbyterian Church, Ojai Lions Club, Redemption Church, Just Serve from the Church of Latter Day Saints, Cavalry Chapel of the Ojai Valley, Villanova Prep School was here, Ojai Ceasefire Now, and then other volunteers from our community. So, it was really wonderful, and we're so grateful for the help. And then, before we begin our meeting today, let's all just take a deep breath and remember that we're all connected and that we're here because we love our town and we care about the issues that affect Ojai. Let's also remember that city council meetings are the city's board meetings and the time for us to do business and give direction to staff so that they can do their work. So, thank you, staff, for being here. We thus need to create and maintain an atmosphere at our meetings in which we can attend business productively, fairly, and civilly. I ask that we all strive to be our most gracious selves and focus on policies versus personalities. To that end, please refrain from side conversations, clapping, snapping, and of course booing. Please turn off your phones. If you need to talk, please go outside. If there are disruptions from individuals or groups, I will issue a warning. If the warning goes unheeded, the Chief of Police, thank you, Chief Newman, for being here, will escort the individual or group out of the meeting. We don't want to have to do this. I'm asking that each one of us practices self-control and respect for others and the process so that the meeting can be productive and efficient. Everyone deserves to be heard. So, thank you all for understanding and modeling the behavior that we want to see in the world. With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. All right, we will move on to discussion. We just have one discussion item that is separated into three parts, A, B, and C. And so, there'll be presentations from staff, first on A, B, and then we'll take public comment on A, B, and then we will do C, and then we'll take public comment on C. So, with that, Mr. City Manager, do we have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, council members. Thank you. It's just going to be a very quick oral update, and thank you for combining A and B because they are really very interrelated. So, with the arrival of a new city manager and a new issue comes an opportunity, and I believe that we have an opportunity here. We have the good fortune of having our county supervisor here with us this evening. Thank you, Supervisor, which I think is very demonstrative of the forward progress we could make in really looking at Soul Park as a great potential future location for additional pickleball programming. As council and the public is aware, there was a start of a memoranda of understanding. It doesn't necessarily need to be the document from which we work. In fact, I would probably recommend, in the interest of trying to move forward expeditiously, that we receive some direction to have the city manager negotiate with the county and probably in a more limited scale, probably trying to work just simply towards pickleball facilities and programming at Soul Park, not leaving behind the greater Soul Park and its potential for the future, but really maybe splitting up the effort so we first focus on trying to address the issue of where pickleball may go in the future. As you know, from being out at Soul Park, it has tremendous opportunity. I had the good fortune to be able to tour it today with Ms. Palmer. We discussed what is needed to bring it up to speed. I feel very confident, from her expertise and from my own past experience, that we could do it with county, you know, cooperation and approval, of course, in a segmented effort so that we could bring courts online and not hold up that waiting for the entire project to be complete. So, if you so desire, I'm looking for direction from council this evening to work with the county to see what type of agreement we could reach for improvements over there with their participation and possibly contributions from the public as well. I think it's important that we consider, on our end at the city side, seed money, a contribution to the effort. I'm aware that we have some grant funds that we could use for this. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be general fund money that you're expending. And I would, if council does provide direction, come back at the next meeting or the following meeting with an update as to, you know, where we stand, what this effort looks like, what any impediments may be, and a proposed timeline. I don't think, with all that said, that we're talking about a very long timeline. This could be a matter of months. And I don't, you know, I know that the county is motivated to do this as well. And again, what more do you need to know that your supervisor is here for this very topic? So, with that, I'm gonna conclude my staff report, but I'm here to take questions. And of course, we have a whole complement of our team and also the county to answer questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from council?
Is the county going to do a presentation or not?
No, we're here to field questions, and we have no separate presentations this evening. Thank you.
Let's move on to public comment, but this is just on A or B. So, if you filled out a card for C, we will get to that afterwards. First...
Ask a question? Does this make sense, or should we cover B now? Oh, I'm just asking, since public comments are gonna be on A and B, and the two are connected, should we move to B first? Would you recommend it or not?
Councilmember, my staff report, I'm sorry, I was not very clear. It actually encapsulated both A and B. I felt that they were really kind of part of the same topic, and so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry to not be clear on that, but...
Okay, thank you.
You're covered.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
I have a couple of questions, actually, for the county. So, what exactly would, what is needed to get the courts back up or up and running to... What kinds of construction are we talking about to get the courts to a place where they're playable and usable for pickleball play?
Thank you for the question, council member. And I should introduce Colter Chisholm, who is our deputy director of the County General Services Agency and also director of the county parks. And I guess, to answer your question, it's dependent on the player. I mean, they're playable now. They're not great, but they're playable. And I think if the city manager, Mr. Harvey, is absolutely right, if the goal here is to move expeditiously, I think there's a path forward outside of the larger discussions, which were previously had with the prior city manager and the prior council, which were much more comprehensive than just pickleball. But I think if we cut those conversations out and limit it to pickleball, there's a real expedited path forward. I was able to see the presentation from members of the public, Mr. Pick, I believe, Peter, Mr. Pick. And it was a great presentation, a great proposal. And as I said to Mr. Pick, and I would tell you, you know, if we can keep the design to the current footprint of the courts, it will be a much more expeditious process. It'll probably be a ministerial zoning clearance, which is, you know, much quicker. If we start enlarging, enlarging the footprint, expanding the current courts, then we potentially might move into some more of a discretionary process, obviously longer, obviously more expensive. So, I think if we can get the design down, and I'm happy to work with members of the public, happy to work with you, to make sure that we move forward with the design, that will move the quickest possible way through the county process. And I'm here just to say I fully support it. I'm happy to champion it at the county level and to get those courts open, if it's the council's desire, as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Chisholm, did you have anything to add to that today?
Only that I agree, and some additional elements for the administrative process. Donations over $10,000 do need the board approval. I would think everything would align pretty easily for those approvals, but board of supervisors' approval is needed. Grants over $100,000 also need board of supervisors' approval. Those affect timeframes. But are, you know, this...
There'd be no problem getting it on the agenda.
And then, for the planning approvals, Parks Department, clearly not the planning department, but zoning clearance is what I understood as well, generally favorable due to the distances from residential. So, they have approved some before that have gone back out for public comment after not Planning Commission, but Planning Director approval. I don't see that as a risk here, so that would be a fairly streamlined process. And then procurement, anything between $20 and $200,000 needs three quotes, and GSA has authority to execute construction contracts. Anything over $200,000 is board of supervisor approval. And those are thresholds to understand for thinking about timeframes.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Okay. So, thank you for that clarity. So, when we're talking about donations, I know there is really an active group that's wanting to raise, to help raise funds. Would donations be tax deductible if individuals or local organizations were making them? Like, how would that process work?
The most common way that's done is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit would accept the donations, and then those donations are tax deductible. It's a little more complex when it is the county. I don't know that it's a donation directly to the county. I'm not sure of the answer on that.
Do we have a Parks Foundation? I don't know if we do.
Unfortunately, we do not. We talk about it about every six months, but today we don't.
The easiest process would be to donate to a single nonprofit, and that nonprofit could contribute the funds to the county. And just to follow up on Mr. Chisholm's comment, we've been in touch with county planning, who, without seeing a final design, you know, can't make any assurances, but big picture we're looking at, as I mentioned, if we can keep it in the same footprint, it should be, in their view, a fairly simple process.
And from my understanding, there, the plans that I have seen, that we were all sent in public comments, include five pickleball courts, one paddle tennis court, and one mixed use. Is that correct? So, overall, a total of six courts?
Yeah, my understanding from the design I saw was that it's the same footprint. You're basically painting, maybe changing, repaving the courts and putting some different nets up, all in the same footprint. So, again, should be a very simple process.
Yes. The latest I've seen was six pickleball courts and two paddleball courts.
Okay. Councilmember Francina?
I wanted to tell the public that we posted the plan that we're discussing right now. It's online with the other public comments. It's, you'll see, it's in color. Help us build a permanent Ojai home for pickleball at Soul Park. It's with the public comments.
Mayor? Sorry to interrupt. I just want to be clear to the council and the public, there is no approved plan. This is all conceptual. We're looking for council direction tonight. That direction could be working with the community group and the county to incorporate elements into that. However, I view this as best a public, public project. And it would be terrific to have donations funneled through a 501(c)(3), but the process would be a public capital improvement project, and it would follow the normal path that you would see. So, I want to be very clear to everybody, there is no plan that we're approving tonight. This is all just a concept, and while what was submitted in public comment may end up coloring what is decided to be done, ultimately, that will be a decision made by decision makers like yourself and the county board of supervisors. So, let's just be very clear about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Luger. Appreciate that. And we can encourage people to look at the plan and give feedback, for sure.
Sorry, again, I wanted to avoid using the word "plan." This is a concept.
Concept.
It's an idea.
We can look at the concept.
The word "plan," please.
Okay. Concept. Look at the concept and give feedback. Okay. Thank you. Training us already. Appreciate that. Okay, well, we will move on to public comment for items A and B. And just a reminder, this is about the MOU and Soul Park. So, first, we have Bill Miley, and then we have Bill Miley.
Mayor, could I just, I just need some clarification. If members of the public wanted to speak on A or B, they could also speak on C. Is that correct?
Yes. Right now, we just have two cards on A and B, and we have many on C.
Okay, so if members of the public do want to speak on A or B, now would be the time to fill out a card. If you are happy to speak on C, that is also great, but it's a little, you know, I understand it's a little confusing, the breaking up, the merging of A and B, and then the breaking out of C and that kind of thing. So, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
And just a reminder, you can speak on A, B, and C in one comment, too. All right, first, we have Bill Miley on A. Thank you, Mr. Miley.
Really? Good evening, Bill Miley. I'm confused. I'm prepared to speak on A and D and then C later on. Can I do that?
That was my question.
And A. This is an outdated option, which seems to have died with the last city council meeting in 2023. Since then, the community has organized to take leadership as the Soul Park Pickleball Project and has come along with the last year and produced what Councilmember Souza just showed us. They provided leadership in the community, which I believe is the way we should go, to give them the principal direction. The city best support them. There is a part, though, that the city should seriously consider through its recreation department, having the right to program several of the courts throughout the year. If the city doesn't get that legally involved, they're gonna have to compete with the public to schedule courts. And that's not what the recreation department should be doing. They should have an ongoing part and be able to manage one or two courts during the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Weston, any comments on A online?
Thank you, Mayor. Those attending on Zoom, if you did not hear the announcement, we are taking public comment on items 1A and 1B. We currently have no raised hands. We'll give a last call for raised hands for Zoom participants. And we'll move on, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Miley, just to confirm, that was A and B that you... Okay, good. Thank you. All right, well, we will move on to C, and council, we'll get back to A, B, and C for discussion after we've heard all public comments. So, we have a presentation on C? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be presenting on item C. So, tonight, item C is related to the existing pickleball courts on the City Hall campus that have been in use for pickleball. So, tonight's staff's recommendation is to consider extending play on those courts for the use of pickleball past the January 31st date. And in doing so, implementing a set of reduced days and hours that would be available for play over what's available now, and also mandating the use of the newly introduced Owl Paddle, which is the quietest paddle now available on the market, and also the quietest balls as recommended per the sound study that the city did earlier this year. As you're well aware, at the December 12th meeting, the city council discussed this item and voted to close the courts effective Wednesday, January 31st, at the end of play at 6:00 PM. Since that meeting, as you're also probably aware, the new Owl Paddle has come into use and been demonstrated to both city staff and a number of the city council members. And the reason that we are discussing this tonight is the request to return for a special meeting to really focus on just this topic was requested by three of the council members to return. Since it was, when it was taken up on the 12th, there are a number of items on the agenda, and it was fairly late in the evening when this matter was taken up. So, in consideration of bringing on new courts potentially at Soul Park, which looks like it could be a reality moving forward, staff's recommendation is leaving the city hall courts intact until that time that those courts either come on in part or in full. Given the existing conditions, there are likely some that could be brought on fairly quickly with some very minor improvements. At that time, we could further ratchet back both the days and hours available at the city hall courts. And then, once the project is completed, we could look at closing the city hall courts in perpetuity, once Soul Park is fully realized. So, again, just to repeat, staff's recommendation would be to allow play to continue with the changes on the days, is taking away any use on Sundays moving forward. So, starting February 1st, Sunday would not be available as a day. And then, the other six days, reducing the time of usage by 30 minutes at the conclusion of each day. Right now, there's two sets of hours, winter and summer. So, the stop time would be 30 minutes earlier, as currently prescribed. And then, also making the quieter equipment mandate as well for use. May I could answer any questions that council might have?
Thank you, Carl. Any questions from council?
I'm gonna wait till I hear the public comments.
Okay. All right, wonderful. All right, we will go ahead and move on to public comment. And just a reminder to everyone, public comments are three minutes. At the end of the three minutes, you will hear a chime as a gentle reminder. And in the spirit of equity, so that everyone gets equal time, the mic will be deactivated after the chime goes off. There's no giving away of time to another speaker. And if you're in agreement with the previous speaker, please also say ditto. We do encourage speakers to state their names and addresses before speaking. So, let's begin with Ron McCray, and then Brenda Kraut, and then Tim Kraut.
Hey, Ben. Thank you. My name is Ron McCray. I live in this neighborhood. I've lived in this neighborhood for over 40 years, in this nice, quiet demonstration park. And first of all, I'd like to thank the three council members that closed this court finally yesterday, after we've been struggling for this for three years or more. It's been over three years ago the pickleball people moved in. In my opinion, like a virus, disturbing quiet and peaceful neighborhood with their loud noises and yellings and their pickleball courts. It was not a good thing for the neighborhoods. For the day, from the day one that they moved in and started playing at that, there were complaints from all the neighbors around. It took three years. We've been there. They play every day. They don't stop. They just keep playing and yelling, and it's not good for this small area, this small neighborhood. We, the citizens of the sound pickleball policies, have attended many of these, been hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars that we have stopped this intrusion of our neighborhood. Most of the people at Ojai are passionate to other people that are in their neighborhoods and their communities. It's like the concern we have for the homeless people over, we take care of them. It's the Humane Society. We get together. When there's ever something wrong going on, this community gets together and they take care of it. But this pickleball court could care less about our neighborhood. They can't care less about it. All they do is they say, it's just so much fun. We want to have them so much fun. Just throw the neighborhood under the bus. Many of us have suffered this depression, anxiety, health problems, and hours and hours of sleepless nights, trying to figure out what we can do about the virus that has taken over the neighborhood. Yeah, you laugh.
I'm gonna ask everyone here to refrain from any comments, including laughter, and let's show respect to every single speaker, regardless of if you agree or not.
Very concerned about the worry about the future of the neighborhood, the peace, the calm and the area that they used to have. They just don't care. They're still willing to throw us under the bus so they continue playing their game. It's all about you, the hell with the neighborhood. You could care less. And by the way, the new paddles and balls make little or no difference to the neighborhood. Ask them. Ask anybody that lives down there. Please do not reopen that pickleball court ever again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we have Brenda Kraut, and then Tim Kraut, and then Mary Wargo.
Hi, council and staff. I'm Brenda Kraut, and I'm a member of the pickleball group. As many members of our pickleball group have told you at past meetings for, over this past several years, about the physical and social benefits they have derived from being a part of the local pickleball group. Well, now, a highly respected medical professional, the Surgeon General of the United States, and I think all of you have this, this is the cover of the latest pickleball magazine, and he's on the front cover with holding up a paddle on that front cover. He is the most trusted advisor in our count, in our country on pedal health, and he is making a priority to deal with what he calls an epidemic, and it's an epidemic of loneliness. He says that in a society dominated by digital interactions, the US is grappling with an unexpected crisis, loneliness. We need time and connection with others to thrive, just as we need food and water. He believes pickleball can be part of the answer. He is making this a priority. Shouldn't we? Pickleball is not a frivolous sport. It is a lifeline to community and health for the hundreds of players who benefit from here at the city hall courts. An estimated 50 million people nationwide are playing this game. That's 15% of the entire US population. Pickleball is not going away. If you go forward with closing the courts after tomorrow, that leaves hundreds of people in Ojai with absolutely no place to play, which is really unconscionable. Most of these people can't afford to join the athletic club, and the current courts at Soul Park, as was discussed, are not really playable right now. So, all of these people will just have to stop playing. If that, is that okay with you? Does the council not feel some responsibility to provide these facilities? Please keep our courts open for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Next, we have, once again, excuse me, no clapping. So, this is a warning. If you want to leave the meeting, please leave. If you want to stay, please do not clap. Thank you. Next, we have Tim Kraut, then we have Mary Wargo, and then we have Denise Kian. Skippy.
Thank you. I'm Tim Kraut. I'm a 63-year-old resident of Ojai. I'm the USA Pickleball Association Ambassador for Ojai and President of the nonprofit Ojai Valley Pickleball, Inc. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff, for having this meeting for us to voice our concerns. Souza, you are in my district, District 4, and I hope that you can come up with a decision that will affect all of us positively. I also want to thank all the players who have, from the beginning, supported growing pickleball in Ojai. Your support of this grassroots effort has made it possible for hundreds of people, young and old, including families, to benefit from the physical and social benefits of pickleball. To play pickleball, certain shoes are not required or a brand. Specific clothing is not required nor an issue. Lessons are not required. Your individual skill rating isn't important. We'll play with you. Accepting and encouraging people on the sidelines to join in the game, to experience the joy and community of playing together, has always been our overall imp- and community of playing together has always been our overall emphasis. The governing body of pickleball, USA Pickleball Association, has recently stepped up to address the noise issue associated associated with the game. Establishing standards for for quiet equipment. The first of its kind, the quiet paddle, the owl, that meets this standard is the first and only recognized quiet paddle now available. Only recently, we as the group became associated with this paddle. We are now being using exclusively this paddle and the quietest ball at the courts. The construction of this paddle has reduced the pop-pop sound, lowering the sound by two octaves and with a fifty percent reduction of sound being five hundred hertz or less at impact. This is just the start in reducing the sound. It's it's gonna take off. It's gonna get even better. Given this new science, I plead with you to reconsider the closing of the city hall courts and to establish an acceptable D B level for all activities on the campus. I urge you to have the city manager to conduct a sound study using our own previous equipment, balls and paddles, and then go in exclusively to the owl and the monarch monarch paddles and to establish a baseline once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, next, we have Mary Wargo, then Skippy, and then Linda Wilson.
Hi, my name is Mary Wargo. I live across the street. I listen to this. I can hear it all day, all the time. The owl paddles, I can still hear it at my house. It 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 penetrates in there. Um, a lot of it depends on if there's only a few people out there playing, which is not bad. But you don't have just a few people. It's usually like, what, sixteen people screaming and yelling and out the property. I have not noticed that big of a difference when I'm on the property. I can still hear it really very loudly out there. If I open a window, if I open the door, I haven't noticed that huge of a difference in the sound, um, especially when there's a full court. All courts are full. And no one here is disputing the fact that it's a healthy, fun sport where no one here says it's not. It's it's the disturbance it causes. And I'm afraid it's just gonna keep getting delayed and delayed and delayed, and it's never gonna end. I mean, it's never gonna change. So, I'm for closing them, obviously. Uh, I'm kinda tired of hearing it. So, that's my view.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, next, we have Skippy, then Linda Wilson, and then Jessica McCray.
Good evening. I'm it's Cowan. I knew it. That's why everybody calls me Skippy. They can't pronounce my name, so no worries. Have you ever asked yourself, why do we need public parks? Our pickleball courts are a public park. These are some statements from the National Recreation and Parks Association. Number one, parks promote health and awareness. People who live near parks are both physically and mentally healthier. Parks encourage physical activity. Inadequate physical activity leads to greater healthcare costs. I know I'm getting older. People who live near parks live longer and healthier lives. Participating in outdoor recreation bolsters resilience to such things as COVID. Parks encounter social isolation social isolation by connecting people to each other. Parks and recreation are critical to childhood development. Children with access to parks showed decreased prevalence of obesity. Parks unite people and strengthen communities. Close proximity to parks boosts home values. After retiring from teaching physical education for thirty-five years, I miss my students. Now, I enjoy playing pickleball with all my new friends. Please keep our beautiful courts open. Thank you.
Thank you, Skippy. Uh, next, we have Linda Wilson, then Jessica McCray, and then William Bradford Widley.
Good evening, and thank you, mayor and council members, for reconsidering keeping our courts open here at city hall. My name is Linda Wilson. I live on Loma Drive in Ojai, here in town. Um, please have an open mind tonight to the facts that have and will be given. We're going to hear, you're going to hear hundreds of pickleball players say, please keep our courts open. And you're not going to hear the two neighbors agree with that. Their mind is their mind is made up. So, we're asking you to please keep an open mind on this. Um, the pickleball community has made major changes, as you've heard, with the new quiet owl paddles that and quiet balls that have just come out. We have compromised. We've been compliant with the two or three neighbors that have somehow been able to dictate the hours of play at a city park. The piece of property was gifted as a use for a park, and you're hearing the joy it has brought to the valley. The city courts have a beautiful bike path close by that many of the locals and visitors in our cities use and many from the Ojai Valley Inn also. One day, hopefully, there'll be a bike path all the way out to Soul Park. The city council should be proud of these courts that you approved to have built there. They've provided exercise and joy for many families and seniors, not to mention all the visitors from out of town. Yes, the courts at Soul will be great. I'm one hundred percent behind them. There's gonna be a cost and time involved in getting them and get everything approved and getting them built to equal, if not better, quality than the courts that we now have. And we definitely do need more courts here in the valley. My concern is that it's going to take much longer than just a few months to have to raise the money and have the courts completed. Um, thank you so much for reconsidering of keeping the courts open. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, next, we have Jessica McCray, then William Bradford Widley, and then Tisha Morris.
Hi, Jessica McCray, Ojai Valley. Um, pickleball is a sport that is fun, adaptive for any age or physicality, and is a great social way to get exercise. The issue, though, is the noise the sport causes. The noise issue has become a national problem, not just an Ojai problem. Even though with the state-of-the-art sound mitigating paddles that only beginners would want to play with, the sound is extremely maddening for those who have the misfortune of living six hundred feet away from a pickleball court. People put their time, money, heart, and soul into their homes. There should be an expectation of enjoyment and comfort in your home. However, the current attitude of pickleball players is that their sport is more important than your home. Before knowing what harm pickleball could bring to the city neighborhood, the city council approved the use of the city tenants' court for pickleball. For three years, the neighbors have been tortured. The city council has corrected this mistake by voting to cease pickleball play January thirty first. Please stay with that decision. I full-heartedly believe that Ojai should embrace and encourage pickleball play. However, it has to be where it is compatible with the community as a whole. A group of people trying to find an alternative place for to play pickleball in the Ojai Valley took the time to ask neighbors of prospective courts if they'd be okay having a pickleball court in their neighborhood. Not one neighbor wanted to have the pickleball court in their neighborhood. It is not just about a few neighbors. The majority of people do not want this in their neighborhoods. This leaves us with only one logical place to embrace pickleball, which is Soul Park. It is big enough to expand and grow as the number of pickleball players grow. The nearest neighbor is over six hundred feet from the courts. The county of Ventura wants pickleball play at Soul Park. For all of those that love the sport of pickleball, please get behind the Soul Park Pickleball Project. Be kind to the community as a whole and embrace the sport in a way that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have Brad Widley, then Tisha Morris, and then Allison Leslie.
In Shakespeare's Romeo and Juliet, the beleaguered prince of Verona screams to the entitled citizens, "All are punished." The message reverberates to the bloodstained teens, the grieving parents, and the world. Why kill your neighbor? Why push us to the wall? Pickleball is a return to innocence, a return to trust, a return to nature, a return to recreation. Why are we turning our back on the young athletes who dance, laugh, and play under the beautiful oak trees? Closing access to a generational sport? Limiting space for teens to get their faces out of their phones and choose to be part of something athletic? Something joyous? Something free? Is this the message we want to teach our most prized possession? The prince was right. All are punished.
Thank you, Brad. Next, we have Tisha Morris, then Allison Leslie, and then Leslie Clark.
Good evening, council, Tisha Morris, and uh Please turn the microphone on. Um, thanks. And but I'm coming here today more as a resident um of Ojai and to discuss something that I don't think has been really um thought through as much as it should be. Now, first, about the Soul Court, Soul Park Courts. I think that's a no-brainer. Regardless of what happens to the city courts, that needs to go forward. Uh, there's plenty, there's enough of a pickleball population um in Ojai City and County to where even if the regardless of the city courts, there's enough um people who would use a Soul Courts. As they currently are, they do need to be resurfaced. Um, why I they are subject uh will subject the city or county to liability because of the large crack through the center of several of them, just um as a F Y I. Um, so that should go forward regardless. Now, as far as the city courts, I know we're here to talk about to close or not to close, but I want to discuss um before, if and before they are to close, what um those city courts are to become, needs to be prepared and voted on and a plan because otherwise, I'm afraid that be trading one problem for another. So, there's what's called the law of vacuum, and that says that nature abhors a vacuum and that will make sure the empty space is filled. And so, in other words, if the city doesn't fill that space, something else will. And I think you can look around to the city property and take a guess of what that is most likely gonna be. Being that they are city property, the city will not be able to do anything if homeless homeless encampments begin to use that property. So, there needs to be a very thought-out plan, thought-out plan of what that property is to be used. Right now, it's a gem. It's a it's a gorgeous park, um, city of Ojai. So, I'm concerned about the preservation of the city property. Um, again, I know the residents, the neighbors, uh, have had it. Um, but it needs to be um thought out of what is gonna go there. Otherwise, who knows? I mean, before the pickleball courts, from my understanding, it was overgrown weeds and 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 this was before a homeless situation um in the in this area. So, just keep that in mind before, if and before they get become closed. So, the point is, unless there is a concrete plan in place, no pun intended, um, I'm afraid you're gonna be exchanging one problem problem for another if there's not a more of a holistic plan in place. Thanks.
Thank you, Tisha. Next, we have Allison Leslie, then Leslie Clark, and then Renee Roth.
Thank you. Um, I'm reading this on behalf of Bob McFaul. Is that gonna? Okay. Um, I'm reading this on behalf of Bob McFaul. It's the green lights on. I hate this. Okay. I think I have a loud enough voice that everybody could hear me. Um, so I'm reading this on behalf of Bob McFaul. He couldn't be here tonight. Why did you ignore the recommendations contained in the ten thousand dollar plus sound study that you paid for? That did provide alternatives to make the existing courts sound compliant. Yes, everyone would have to compromise a bit, but that seems seems reasonable. It makes it appear that you never intended to objectively consider the report recommendations. Relying solely on Soul Park for the future of pickleball in Ojai shows this council is abdicating responsibility to provide facilities that fall in your jurisdiction for the constituents. This is not how an elected body typically responds to the needs of the community. Do you not feel any level of responsibility to provide facilities for this large group or citizens? Or are you okay with leaving it up to other agencies to provide? At a minimum, the existing court should remain open until alternative facilities are made available. That seems only responsible and right, particularly in the light of the fact that the pickleball community, in good faith, made a sizable monetary and fiscal investment in the courts based on an agreement with the previous city council, anticipating their continued availability. If you are truly confident that the courts at Soul Park will be ready and available for play very quickly, wouldn't it be reasonable to allow play to continue at city hall until the new courts are available? You also need to ensure that the new courts are totally available to the public and that a small group of people doesn't control their use. Consequently, the city will need to acquire from the county the management of these courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Uh, next, we have Leslie Clark, then Renee Roth, and then Randy Roth.
Good evening, mayor and city council, and thank you so much for this special meeting. My name is Leslie Clark, and I'm a fourth-generation Ojai resident. And I think pickleball is really fun. But we mostly, a lot of us seem to agree on that in this room. But it's not just frivolous play. It's a lifeline to good health and connecting with people, especially for seniors. Even the Surgeon General thinks it's important. All of you, come out and try it. It's really fun. We're a friendly, inclusive family. Somebody usually brings muffins or fruit or produce from their gardens. We are a family. This Miss Hobson family gave this property to the city. My great-uncle Tom and John Hobson were business partners. Tom was county supervisor and donated the property that is now the museum. He and my grandfather, Sheriff Bob Clark, owned the livery stable that is now Village Drug. And across the street, I had Nomad Gallery for twenty-three years. I'm proud to be a part of what established Ojai's special character. These courts have become a part of that special character. They are perfectly Ojai appropriate. Greg Smith wrote you a letter stating that pickleball courts are in keeping with what his family intended when they gifted the property. Historically, the spot was for recreation. It was for tennis, not housing for homeless. He believes in an engineering solution and offered financial support to find one. The pickleball industry will solve the noise issue, and we should adapt as they do. We already have, using the quiet owl paddles exclusively since January first, and we actually like them. We have spoken to several neighbors who are in favor of our staying. There are two that we know that are very opposed to our staying, but there are four that we know that are very opposed to our there are two opposed to our staying, and there are four that want us to stay because they're very concerned about what will happen to the courts that we maintain perfectly when we are not there. You voted for a stakeholders' meeting that never happened, but it should. Let's work this out together. With more sound mitigation here at city hall and more space at Soul Park, we could keep the courts open and maybe make the 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 some of the neighbors more happy. Be concerned about the neighbors, but also about the hundreds of players. We are constituents too. Wouldn't it be cool to surprise everyone and actually work together?
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, next, we have Renee Roth, then Randy Roth, and then Deborah Becker.
Good evening, um, council and
Good evening, Council, and I want to welcome Ben Harvey. Thank you for joining us tonight. Carl, you did an excellent job on your reports for summarizing all the issues. And I want to thank Matt Lavier and staff for being here. I think this is a really important show of support at trying to resolve the issues that are being raised here. So as you know, first of all, I need to say my husband is a very, he wrote my speech tonight, and I'm not going to say that part of it, but he, he is a very, very enthusiastic pickleball player. Although he wants to say he's not very good. I, I think he's pretty good. But what happens during the holidays, and I hope you don't take out the Saturday and Sunday hours. When my daughters come home for holidays, Christmas, New Years, we, the one thing they want to do is get dad out to play pickleball with them. It's really important for our family to be able to play pickleball on Saturdays and Sundays. If you would even consider having Sunday be, you know, family pickleball day or something so that the family idea of everybody getting out and supporting the sport is really strong in our kids, and I know in other kids, as soon as they invite friends to come play, they're, yeah, let's do this. Let's go. Let's go up there and play. So I just want you to know, everybody can join in. Tim has done a great job of inviting everybody on all levels of play. We played with the Quiet Paddles. We were amazed at the difference, completely amazed. It was like you could hear each other talk. You could almost hear each other think. There was so, it was so quiet. Now, I have to admit, there is a rambunctious group of players who are very good players, and they can make a lot of noise. I, I'm, you know, my daughters and we were playing and they were right next door to us, and they were like, wow, get out of the way. There are different levels of play at the courts. So I think it would be great, as far as Tisha's comments, have those courts be long-term family and senior citizen courts so that we can not feel like we're not invited to play pickleball in our own community. So I do feel that there's a way to resolve these issues. I do feel also that the city is not in the business of protecting people's property values. That is not your job. Your job is really to safeguard the entire community and do what's best for the entire community, not one set of specific property owners who are complaining about the noise.
Thank you, Renee. Next, we have Randy Roth, then Deborah Becker, and then Peter Sezzi.
Good evening. I'm Randy Roth, a citizen of Ojai, and in the spirit of full disclosure, an enthusiastic and not very talented pickleball player. Over 30 years ago, Harvard professor Robert Putnam published a book called Bowling Alone. The book has become one of the most influential and depressing studies of Americans' citizens' slow decline into isolationism, atomism, and loneliness. Professor Putnam lays the blame for this epidemic to the collapse of civic and voluntary organizations, churches, clubs, fraternities, amateur sports teams, yes, even bowling leagues. Putnam discovered that prior to his study, men and women would bowl in leagues. But during the period that he did his study during the 80s and 90s, there were no, or very few bowling leagues. Men and women would bowl alone. Against this background, I would like to highlight the achievement of Tim and Brenda Kraut. Tim and Brenda have managed to create exactly what Putnam feared was disappearing. A vibrant volunteer organization of several hundred Ojai citizens who share the enjoyment of pickleball and the joy of connecting to their fellow citizens. I'm not aware of anything else that has brought so much joy and friendship to so many people, women and men, adults and children. Creating such a reservoir of joy and community took years of loving care and attention. And yet that reservoir of joy and community can evaporate tonight with one vote. I ask that the city council vote to allow pickleball to continue at the City Hall Courts until and unless an adequate replacement is in place. Please be aware that we are not unsympathetic to the noise concerns of our neighbors near the courts. We want to be good neighbors. To that end, if the city council grants our request to keep pickleball at City Hall, we will commit to working to alleviate the noise nuisance. In particular, we make the following commitments. First, we will rigorously enforce the hours of play. We will rigorously enforce the use of sound reducing paddles and balls. Third, we will adopt whatever new technologies come to reduce noise as they become available. We want to be good neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Next, we have Deborah Becker, and then Peter Sezzi, and then Anissa Faulkner. Anissa, maybe.
Hi, my name is Debbie Becker, and I live up on the McDonald area. I've lived here only for a couple of years, but when I moved here, it was amazing. This pickleball court was my second biggest welcoming that I got, and I felt so at home after playing with them, and they invited me, even though I know how to play tennis, but not pickleball. So they just welcomed me into their group, and it's been a second home for me. I moved away from a community after living there for 30 years. I was very involved in the public school part of that area because my home, my kids were small then. And one of the things was we needed a high school built there because the closest high school was over an hour away. And so our kids would be on a bus for more than an hour and each way. So there was a high school built there. It was already there, just they didn't do it. We had a lot of the neighbors complaining because they didn't want a school there. Well, they bought property right next to a school. Yeah, it wasn't necessarily a high school. It was a junior high then, but it was built for high school. There was a tennis court there that was always a tennis court. Maybe it wasn't used, but they bought next to a tennis court. So it's gonna, in a park. There's some responsibility with, you know, your investment that you make yourself. So if I move next to a school, I'm going to know it's going to be noisy. If I move next to a park, I know it's going to be noisy. If I move next to a parking lot, I know I'm going to hear a lot of cars. So anyway, I'm hoping that you reconsider and support the pickleball staying here. For me, it's a much further drive, another 10, 15 minutes to get to Soul Park. So how often will I come? I don't know. That extra time counts. The last thing is that Soul Park right now, he said you could use it? No, you can't. It's got tape. Tape lines. That's not easy to play with on, for pickleball. Anyway, it's not a good solution for right now. So don't close the courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next, we have Peter Sezzi, then Anissa Faulkner, and then Sandra. I'm not sure.
Hello, my name is Peter Setzi, lifelong Ventura County resident and resident of the city of Ojai for the last 10 years. I live up on Blanch. I'm very happy to see that this item came before the council again. I know politics, the nature of politics is compromise. And there's no solution that will make everyone happy. But I will say, ever since January 1st, the compromise has really been one-sided. The pickleball community has gone to the Quiet Paddles, and there is a marked difference. When all four courts are busy, of course, there's going to be more noise because that's just the nature of, there's 16 people playing the game. But there's just, if you're walking here, like I said, I live on Blanch, about five blocks away. I'll ride my bike or I'll walk down here. I can't hear anything from the courts until I'm on City Hall property. I mean, even if I parked out here in the parking lot, you can't hear. If I'm on the street, you can't hear. It's only when I get my bike to the bike rack that I can hear. So the best way to do this is get science. Science is our friend. Science is our ally. Get data. Why don't you track and ask what the appropriate decibel level is? I'm concerned that in this compromised situation, I've never heard what is the threshold, what is the limit, what is the maximum that our friends and neighbors would be willing to hear? To me, it sounds like they want to hear nothing. When they moved in, they moved in next to a park, not next to a cemetery. If you want absolute quiet, then move next to Nordoff Cemetery. You move next to City Hall where there is an active park. To me, a park, I have a child. Right after this, my apologies, I'll have to leave because I have to go home and help him with his homework. If I wanted to live in a place that's completely quiet, I would not move in next to a park. Has it changed? Yes. The nature of life has changed. Things change. I implore you, please come up with a compromise solution. I think continuing to allow pickleball to play at the City Hall Courts with limitations on what days, what hours, if you want to increase the limitations, right now, you can only play seven hours a day. It changes during the times of the year. Right now, we can play till 6 o'clock. What time did you get here? What time did you get here for City Council? Was there daylight? You can't even play till 6 o'clock. There's not lights. Get data. Have monitor. See if we play past 11:30. See if we play past 6 o'clock. I will guarantee you, we do not. Soul Park is good. Soul Park might be the perfect solution. Do not let the perfect get in the way of the good. You have a public good right now in a public park. There is a compromise solution. Figure out what the sound thresholds are that the neighbors are willing to tolerate. And if we exceed that, then let there be consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next, we have Anissa Faulkner, then Sandra. Hansen, no? Okay, Sandra N. maybe, and then Bill Miley.
Anissa had to leave early. She had another commitment. She asked me to read her remarks. She says, "I live directly across the street and have never had a problem with the noise, nor has my husband, my children, or any other neighbors. I wholeheartedly embrace any and all people being outside gathering and exercising. The Quiet Paddles are quiet, much quieter. The pickleball players have done nothing but be cooperative and adhered to all the rules and guidelines. They strictly follow the posted times for play and are happy jovial people. I have never heard anything but laughing and cheering and the occasional groan of disappointment. But that's only if I'm outside. While you are inside, you can hear nothing. And do you know, and do you all know that they keep the courts impeccably clean? I personally washed on numerous mornings groups of players literally squeezuing the courts, collecting leaves and debris, and getting it ready for the day, all for free so they can enjoy the courts. What do you think is going to happen when the pickleballers are gone? The courts will be in a complete disarray, and then maybe some homeless people will move in on the courts. Is that a better alternative? Have you heard the late night yelling, arguing, and swearing that goes on in the encampment? I have never played, nor am I interested in playing. Though I have been politely and kindly invited, I am a lifelong athlete, though some may, so maybe this is why I appreciate the game and what it represents. I like the fact that people are on the courts every day enjoying themselves. There doesn't need to be an alternative place for them. They are fine where they are. I've tried, and I don't think it's possible for me to understand the negative comments directed at the pickleball players. Furthermore, this isn't a neighborhood, but rather a street with a few houses on it. So I think the location is perfect. Carry on, pickleball players. I hope you get to stay. Thank you."
Thank you. Anissa, Anisha in Abstentia. Next, we have Sandra. Sorry, Sandra, I can't read your last name. Norman, maybe? We're curious. What is your last name?
Well, I'm the mysterious Sandra since nobody else stepped up. My name is Sandra Hansen. And I'm a 62-year resident of Ojai. I've been here since I was five, so I've been around for a while. And I want to thank you and commend the council for readdressing the use of our city pickleball courts. I'm a retired school teacher, and while teaching fifth and sixth grade about democracy, they learned that democracy is about majority rule. We saw this at work in the 3-2 vote to close our courts tomorrow. Democracy is also about representation of the voters you represent, devoid and regardless of your emotional feelings and personal preferences. Your job is to represent the wishes of your constituents. As a negotiator for the union in our school district during contentious meetings, we most often ended up with a consensus in which a compromise is agreed upon, where each party gets a bit of what they're, where each party gets a bit of what they want, leaving neither party fully satisfied. But they can live with the agreement, and they agree to the terms of the consensus. The pickleball community has worked hard to come to an agreement that will appease the few neighbors who have complained. The courts have limited business hours that are strictly adhered to. The new Owl Paddles in use are so quiet, you have to look and listen carefully when you get to the courts to see if anyone is playing. They've helped with the soundproofing and truly want to make this right. There are so many people who enjoy the beautiful court. Closing it doesn't make democratic sense. There must be a way to come to a consensus about this issue. Thomas Jefferson guaranteed us the right to the pursuit of happiness. Pickleball brings us so much joy and happiness. I don't know where we'll play if our courts are closed and Soul Park will be closed due to the construction. So please let us play. Thank you once again for hearing us and opening the conversation back up. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Sandra. Next, we have Bill Miley, then Larry Steingold, and then Gail Childress.
Good evening. It's time to formally take the next step. Step up to a settled structure or community recreation to Soul Park. Please end the current disruptive play at City Hall. The Owl paddle can lower the pop hit some according to the developer to below 1,000 hertz. It lowers the impulse sound, some depending upon the type of hit. The volume or intensity of the hit in decibels is lowered from 86 decibels to about 80 decibel. The Owl paddle is new. Requiring quieter paddles has been offered and tried over the last three years. It's a challenge. The Owl paddle, and this is important, is a recreational paddle for casual players according to the USA Pickleball. Owl paddles cannot be used for any kind of tournament play. Who plays on the courts? There are two answers. Ojai Pickleball, Inc. submitted five petition pages to the city to quote, "keep these courts open." We counted, I helped count the names with addresses, and there were 123 names. Of these, six addresses were unreadable. 31 addresses were within Ojai city limits, and 86 addresses lived outside of city limits, several outside the county. 86. The second set of player addresses comes from a website called Global Pickleball Network. They locate playing groups throughout the area. We selected the Ojai group. Of the 99 listed players playing in Ojai, four lived in Ojai, and 95 lived outside the city limits. It's time to close the historic tennis court as modified. People mentioned there are two neighbors that complained. Our citizen group has eight members. I don't live nearby, but I believe that people have the right for a healthy, sound environment.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Larry Steingold, then Gail Childress, and then Alan Paragian.
Paragian. Larry Steingold, resident. The city does have a requirement, a obligation to help us keep our values up and not waste our values. The neighbors, this is zoning issue, okay? It's a noise issue. But Tisha's right. The predictable consequence is if you close the pickleball court, what do we get? More expense, no budget, plenty of money spent with nothing, nothing returned. So keep the pickleball courts open until there is an alternative that's up and running. This thing, this new Mr. Harvey that you're going to have to deal with is garbage. Okay? It's a one-year lease with a month, a month, get out of jail. Okay? Why, why do we let everybody in for free? Who's going to control the pickleball courts? Who's going to keep track of who's going to play? Okay? It's all got to be worked out. But we need, where's the money? I mean, who's going to build the pickleball courts? How much is it? Is it two hundred thousand? Is it half a million? Can they raise the money? Is it coming out of the city budget? Do something, but this can't go on. Okay? You've got to close the courts when there's an alternative. Soul Park makes a lot of sense. Just make the deal. Uh, Mr. Leveer's here, I think, is, aren't you? He's here. Okay? It's an election year, it looks good, the votes are here, make it happen. Okay? How much money is it going to cost? Or make the deal at Matilaha and use those courts for the time being also. But these people want to play, they have a right to play and they do vote and they're here. But so do the neighbors. Okay? The neighbors have a right. They have a right to peace and quiet. You certainly don't want to buy their homes. That would take them out. You can put bocce here or shuffleboard, or why not have other games? We can put the park and rec and take care of it and this can be a kid's place because you're going to have to service all the kids coming over from Bryant. Okay? Because there's no playground for them. But this is, this has to get done. But give them a date, a date certain. Can you cut a deal in thirty days with the county? Can this be up and running in six months? Just make it happen. I mean, that's your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, next we have Gail Childress, then Alan.
Paragian, is that right?
Paragian.
Paragian, thank you. And Scott Gillies.
Hi, I'm Gail Childress, a longtime resident. Um, and pickleball is so fun. I, I would be lost without it and I really, um, want to say ditto to the last speaker. Um, please keep it open until we have an alternative place to play. And don't cut the hours, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Uh, next we have Alan Paragian. Ian Paragian, Scott Gillies, and then, um, Ed, I'm not sure, Edward Clausen, maybe?
There it is. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Alan Paragian, been a resident of the valley for thirty-five years. By now, you've heard repeatedly about the numerous benefits that pickleball renders to our community. So I won't go into any more of that. Anyone attempting to come up with an ideal activity for the benefit of our community could not dream of one as successful as this one has been, thanks to Tim and Brenda. Of course, as in all new endeavors, not everyone agrees. While only two or three residents living within several hundred feet of the courts have raised an objection, others not in any way affected have spoken up against our courts, thus rendering artificial weight to their views. And by the way, I have heard from just as many residents living close by who have no objections and actually prefer our group being there as compared to others. Please reconsider the closing of our beautiful courts that benefit so many, especially since the introduction of our new lower sound equipment, you've heard all about it, and that's continually improving and the proposed sound mitigation wall. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next we have Scott Gillies, then, um, not sure the first name, Clausen, and then Mark Bodycomb.
Um, Madam Mayor, council members, staff members, Scott Gillies in support of pickleball. I'd like to echo the comments made by Brenda Skippy and Leslie Clark regarding the uh, social aspect and well-being of pickleball, uh, addressing these, this pandemic of loneliness and, uh, um, social disconnection. And Tim, Randy, and Peter on the science and engineering of noise abatement. Regarding noise abatement, the pickleball community is a good neighbor and has demonstrated a willingness and has instituted measures to address the issue. It has exceeded the City Council resolution requiring the use of quiet equipment after January first, twenty-four, by voluntarily purchasing the quietest paddle and balls available, which are being exclusively, used exclusively by players with a hundred percent compliance. This has reduced the noise level in line with accepted noise level standards for residential neighborhoods. City Council in November of twenty-two hired the foremost acoustic sound engineering consultant in the industry, PSM LLC, to produce a sound mitigation study. Trust your consultant, get a twenty-twenty-four update to the study and implement any current recommendations for quiet equipment and acoustic absorbing sound barriers. Please base your decisions on the proper scientific and engineering solutions. There is no alternative venue available right now. As of tomorrow, you potentially disenfranchise hundreds of pickleball players with no venue and they are all stakeholders in the future use of the City Hall campus facilities. I'd just like to refer again to the quote, uh, Brenda Kraut uh, read you from the Surgeon General, Dr. Murdy, regarding uh, the need for social connection and connectedness uh, in our modern world where in the last fifty years with all the technological advancements, we've lost a lot of that. So, uh, I urge you to pass a resolution tonight for the continuing use of the City Hall courts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Next we have Gordon Clausen, and then Mark Bodycomb, and then Rowan Galouli.
Sorry. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm, I'm a doctor, my handwriting sucks, I'm sorry. Comes with the territory. And if I had to redact everything that hasn't already been said, I'd say ditto and leave. But I wrote this, so I'm going to read it. My name is Gordon Clausen, I'm an emergency room physician, living and working in Ojai for thirty-six years. I was asked to comment on the health benefits of pickleball, which at all of these meetings, and I've been to a lot of them, you have heard many, many times before, and I really don't intend to belabor. What I feel is particularly relevant to tonight's discussion, the City Hall courts, is the social health, the camaraderie that exists at this singular place. Every day I see youth, adults, and very mature adults, and tall people, together enthusiastically engaging in, yes, life-affirming exercise, but just as importantly, enjoying each other. It's like the bar Cheers, where everybody knows your name, but the only drink is water. The regulars, citizens of Ojai and surrounding cities even, race to greet each other and go out of their way to welcome visitors to a shared pursuit in a place that has become a beacon to the outside world. We were drawn to get off our couches and come to laugh, run and play at an addictive sport in a beautiful setting. Thanks to the city of Ojai, no one pays entry fees or club dues. I do both. I'm a member of the racket club, I can ride my bike into Soul Park and I live right by it. I prefer City Hall for many, many reasons. It is understood that just showing up without prior arrangement may be a short wait will get you into a game. Over the horizon of months, if not years, there are plans, not even plans, concepts, for an alternative, but it simply does not exist now. Not insignificant hurdles of expense, negotiations with the Ventura County remain to be overcome. Please consider the immediate impact that closing the city courts will have on hundreds of citizens right now. And like I say, ditto, it's been said, you've heard it, and I think you've decided about it. I was here at the meeting when the pickleball sound mitigation report conducted one year ago, almost to the day, um, was done, and then it was released later, obviously, was cited by the opponents of pickleball as certain proof of their complaints. I did not disagree. I heard the numbers, I got the message. Uh, I'm now quoting though, from page fifty-six of that PSM report and recommendations. Quote, "If Ojai can control paddleball and use, which we're doing, the best recommended paddle and ball should be evaluated at critical court sites to see if sufficient noise reduction can be realigned."
Thank you, Gordon. Uh, next we have Mark Bodycomb, then Rowan Galouli, and then Roger Hartman.
Uh, thank you, City Council, for, uh, just again, listening to all of us. Um, I don't want to repeat, uh, what I think many other people have said more cogently than I am going to. Uh, I really am just very specifically asking the City Council to reverse the decision that you made on, on December twelfth. Uh, that's specifically what I'm asking you to do. And frankly, Susa, I'm really asking you specifically to rethink kind of the, uh, decision that you made and represent the city. Um, Mr. Whitman, I live in your, uh, district. And, um, again, I think even at the last meeting, I think that, um, you had already made up your mind and I just want you to know you're not representing me, um, someone who lives in your district. Um, the pickleball community and the city has made enormous remediation efforts that you've heard all about and I think have made a significant, um, real difference in the noise levels that were legitimate issues that neighbors had to, uh, to, you know, that needed to be addressed. The right decision, as you've heard over and over again, is really to allow the city courts to remain in their current status. I have to, I'm sorry, just disagree with the staff's recommendations to reduce hours and reduce days. I think that just is not called for, given the current set of, uh, circumstances and the reality and the science that is related to kind of what's going on today. The right decision is to let us continue to play here until there are viable, fully completed and fully, you know, acceptable, uh, um, facilities out at Soul Park. And, and Matt, I, I have to agree with a couple of people who said they are not safe today. I know you kind of said they were, but they're seriously, that they are not safe today for anyone to play on. Um, so, um, I, I, actually just something that happened this morning too, that I found very interesting. I happened to just be at a coffee place and I was talking to somebody who works for the, uh, local newspaper, who had come out, um, here recently, like in the last day or two, and actually done kind of a little sound study of their own, using, uh, you know, their phone and stuff. And their comment to me was that the birds in the cars were actually more, uh, loud than pickleball was. And again, I just take that as an objective, um, observation about the noise levels based on the current science and the technology that we have uniformly implemented here at the courts. So I encourage all of you to reconsider and I urge you to keep these courts open until there's a really viable alternative out at Soul Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, next we have Rowan Galouli, and then Roger Hartman, and then Matt Meyer.
Good evening. My name is Rowan Galouli. I've lived in Ojai all my life and I'm a senior at Nordoff High School. I've only been playing pickleball for about six months, uh, but it's become a huge part of my life. Over the summer, my friend Luca introduced me to the game. We played four to five days a week for about, sometimes as long as six hours a day. Now, he plays seven days a week. That's how much he loves it. What I love most about the community, about pickleball, is the community of pickleball. We were the new kids on the court taken under the wing by the regulars. We're coached, advised, helped, and included. When I started, I didn't have a paddle, so I used my kitchen cutting board. And I used it well, I used it well. Soon enough, I was nicknamed the chef, Mr. Charcuterie, Mr. Charcuterie. And when it snapped, players generously began lending me paddles to play with. For our efforts, kind souls brought glazed muffins, fresh fruit, and even loaves of bread to keep our stamina up during the intense game. On court, I've met people from all walks of life. I've played with beekeepers, principals, carpenters, and ranch owners, to name a few. On the sidelines, I've talked personal philosophy, real estate, and college decisions. On my college applications and my scholarship applications, I wrote about the joy of pickleball. It's a game anyone can enjoy and excel at. I've brought friends who mountain bike, do Muay Thai kickboxing, and wrestle, and they all wanted to come back and play again. I address you, the council, have you ever played on the courts right next door? I think you'd love them. City Hall is convenient. Here is right in the center of Ojai. Here I can bike to meet my friends, surrounded by beautiful oak trees and stucco architecture. I implore you, please do not close these courts. While I can't bike to Soul, I do support the building of the Soul Park Courts. As a child, I played in the Rocket. I slid down the slide and I attached a branch to my tricycle to mow the grass. My dad caught me, uh, my dad taught me catch there and it's a beautiful three sixty degrees. As the fastest-growing sport in America, according to NPR, I can already see the overflow. There are at least fifty players on the busiest days with a sixteen-person queue that is often full. That's why I think we should build more courts, not reduce those, not replace those at Town Hall. We should have both, not choose one over the other. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Rowan. Uh, just a reminder, uh, if you could hold your comments, um, and, and be silent, thank you. Uh, next we have Roger Hartman, then Matt Meyer, and then Leonard Clay.
Hi, I'm Roger Hartman, and that's a hard act to follow, but I'm going to read mine. I li, I've lived in the Ojai Valley for thirty, over thirty years. I'm here to express my full support for keeping pickleball courts open at the Ojai City Hall, regardless of Soul Park. I appreciate your tireless efforts, uh, made towards finding an acceptable solution to this difficult issue. Regarding noise and hours of operation at the City Hall pickleball courts, I want to emphasize that there should be no concern about compliance or enforcement. The pickleball community is a closely knit self-policing group and they've demonstrated excellent compliance over the past three years regarding court hours, specifically in January when the city mandated the quiet paddles, quiet balls. The pickleball community has complied and I'm confident they'll continue to use quiet equipment and they will respect the designated court times. I strongly urge the council members to vote to keep the courts open. And this facility is important for fostering community activity and health among Ojai residents. The pickleball community has shown they can self-govern and comply with regulations. With your continued support, I'm confident any concerns can be addressed amicably. Thank you again for your efforts.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, next we have Matt Meyer, then Leonard Clay, and then David Price.
Good evening, council members, mayor. Thank you for hearing us again. I'm sure you're tired of talking about pickleball. Um, I'm part of the virus, as I see there's a lot of virus in the, in the room tonight. Um, happy to be among these people. A lot of these people, I wouldn't know if it wasn't for pickleball. Um, I'd also like to represent the dwindling middle class of Ojai. Um, I have a lot of nicknames on the court, Spider Monkey being one of my favorites. I'm also not just there to have fun though. Um, I am a resident here, my wife and I operate our business here in Ojai as well. I live in Miners Oaks where motorcycles go down our blocks all day long. I don't shout at them, say that they're ruining our neighborhood because they want to have fun. They're a part of our neighborhood. And just like those guys, pickleball is a part of this neighborhood. We are your neighbors. One of our players talked about loneliness. Um, whenever my wife feels that I've become antisocial, or she feels I'm struggling, she says, "Go play pickleball." I come back two hours later, a changed person. Um, it's not only good for your physical health, it's really good for your mental health. Um, there's a lot of relationships, um, that have been created in this town that, um, wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for this, um, for the sport. And we can't stop it. As somebody else said, it's the fastest-growing sport in America, you know? Uh, one day, I picked up my son, he's six, took him over to the courts and, uh, thought he'd want to just play in the grass. He's like, "No, I want to figure this out." And one of the guys that has become a friend of mine, took him over on the side court and just started teaching him slow hits. By the end of the hour, he knew how to play pickleball. Um, so it's, it's going to be the next generation as well. Um, and I, somebody else mentioned democracy. I think we're at a time in America where... at a time in America where because of, uh, everything, all the information coming our way on the internet, we've become so divided. We've become so separated. Um, I see it in other parts, um, even around town, driving on the road, there's a lot of aggression. Um, pickleball is one of those things that really unites a community. I've seen few things, um, in Ojai and in other places that I've lived that bring so many diverse groups of people together, young, old, um, by, all, all across races. The homeless guys come out and play with us. Um, tell me one other thing in Ojai that brings this many diverse group of people together. There isn't. This is it. So I implore you to reconsider tonight. Um, my life isn't the same without pickleball in it, and it's, should be here downtown, central Ojai, where we can ride our bikes to it. Soul Park is on the other end. This is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, next we have Leonard Clay, then David Price, and then, um, Michael.
In response to the last speaker, come on down to the Ojai Arts Center. We have old and young, good cross-section of Ojai and the surrounding valley, all enjoying themselves. Um, so it's not just pickleball. In fact, at the risk of being sarcastic, after being here tonight, I have a tough time figuring out how the universe survived before pickleball. I, I, it's beyond me. Um, it's pretty clear that on December 11th, you all voted to close the pickleball courts as of tomorrow. A vote to reopen them is to reconsider the issue. Under Robertson's Rules of Order, which you all have agreed to follow, that's a reconsideration. Reconsideration is discouraged because there's value in finality. In addition, as part of the value in finality, Robertson says that in order to entertain a motion to reconsider, which you have to do before you reconsider, um, you need four, you need two-thirds of the council, which is four votes. I understand, Mr. Summers had said that's, that's like nonsense, Leonard. Um, I don't think it is. And Mr. Summers, I would cite you too. Um, yeah, uh, Bullfield LLC versus Merced Irrigation District, 65 Calat Fifth, 442, 458 through 459. Um, Michael Leslie Productions versus the City of Los Angeles, 207 Calat Fourth, 1011, 1022, and Poser versus Department of Tr- of Transportation, 145 Calat Third, 261, I'm sorry, 269, uh, and 271. Um, so I think that you need a vote. Before you can consider a substantive motion, you need a motion to reconsider, which requires four votes. If you don't get the four votes, there's no voting on anything else. Um, we've got 55 seconds. Um, I want to thank Mr. Roth, because he's the only pickleball advocate who expressed sincere concern for the, for the neighbors. One of the reasons that we are outnumbered here is because it's only placed in one place, and people come from all over to play. If you were considering playing at, at Sozodi or Lower Libby, you'd have that many more people here. Um, and lastly, because I've got 22 seconds, part of, uh, majority rule is respect for the minority. Uh, the people moved in here, nobody, and, and you all voted, not you, but the council voted to approve the pickleball without notice any to neighbors, and without any knowledge what was going on with pickleball, because nobody heard of it.
Thank you, Len. Uh, next we have David Price, then Michael, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, and then Barbara Price. David Price here? Nope. Uh, okay, Michael? Might be Price, I'm not sure. Is there Michael? Who's that a card? Okay, how about Barbara Price? Nope. Okay. Uh, Weston, any comments online?
Yes, Mayor. We have one more in-house, Karen Quimby, followed by a few raised hands on Zoom. We'll have, followed, after Karen Quimby, we'll have Heidi Williams, and then John Wellborn. Karen?
Dear council members, my name is Karen Quimby. I'm a third-generation Ojai resident. I understand we're here again tonight because you've all received very angry communication from the pickleball group, who feels they are entitled to play pickleball wherever they want, and that their fun trumps the right of neighbors to the peaceful enjoyment of their homes. They have never cared that their fun is a source of torture for the neighbors, and they still don't care, as you've heard tonight. The noise from the owl paddles and court play still penetrate the homes of neighbors. The problem has not been solved. Had the leader of the pickleball group cared about the noise issues, we wouldn't be here today, because everyone would be happily playing at Soul Park. But instead, the pickleball ambassador has done everything he can to sabotage the Soul Park effort. He has refused to participate in the effort, the community effort, to build the courts at Soul Park, and he's even, um, uh, prevented the Soul Park pickleball project from negotiating with a, with a, uh, 501(c)(3). So please don't regret, don't reward this behavior, the threats to you, as well as to us, the neighbors, with one more minute of play at the City Hall courts. They've had three years to enjoy their sport at our expense. It's enough. If you vote to reconsider your decision to close the courts without building the 15-foot wall that's also mandated or recommended by this professional sound study that the City Hall, that the city paid $13,000 for, you are in essence begging the neighbors to sue the city. As you well know, that you have been violating the rights of our neighbors to live in peace and quiet for three whole years, as detailed in your very own sound study. Instead, stick with your original decision that was based on the values that you and our beloved community of Ojai do and should hold dear, to treat your neighbors as you yourself would wish to be treated. Finally, the citizen, the Ojai Citizens for Sound Pickleball Policy respectfully requests that you direct city staff tonight to develop a pickleball-specific noise ordinance to address the noise issues once and for all, because as we've found, no one wants pickleball courts next to their homes. Cities around the country have been passing such ordinances to address the unique noise of pickleball that pickleball produces. Park City, Utah, and Centennial, Colorado are two examples that could serve as models for Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Mayor, we have one more in-house, Greg Doss.
Greg Doss? Uh, there's one more card also.
Right here. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little under the weather, so this is what you get tonight. I know I've talked to most of you. Mr. Whitman, I think you were the one that brought up the motion. I wish that I could have talked to you in the, in the interim, but I know you can't respond, but I would like to ask you, I remember you said in the last meeting that when you come into the meeting, you could hear the pickleball, and it drives you crazy, and that's once a month. I'm just wondering if you could even hear it anymore. I've talked to some neighbors that said that they can't hear it at all. I was naive to think that it would satisfy everybody, um, but I feel like we're on the right track. I still think that there's hope for these City Hall courts for some version of pickleball. And I'm committed to doing anything I can to appease, it doesn't matter if there's two neighbors or eight neighbors, or, I don't care the number. I want everybody to be satisfied. That's why I'm not a politician, I guess. I don't envy your jobs. Um, but to say that I don't care about the neighbors and their experience, uh, is, is, uh, really hurt my feelings. I do care. Uh, and I care about this community a lot. I care about finding a solution. So, um, I read the letter from Greg Smith. Um, I know that there is, uh, interest in doing whatever we can to increase the sound mitigation, to appease, uh, the neighbors that are left still demanding. And ultimately, uh, I would love to see some courts at Soul Park. Uh, I've worked with culture already. I am no longer on the Soul Park pickleball project. Um, but I still support those courts being built. And honestly, the friends of mine that hit the ball really hard and make a lot of noise are probably gonna be playing over there. But I'm really looking out for these courts at City Hall, because I think there's a community of people that can play this game and really not bother anybody. So I'm gonna continue, uh, standing up for that. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, Greg.
Mayor, the next cards are Travis Canafani and Anna Falvo. Travis?
Hello, everyone. Mayor, officials, council, and, uh, general public, most of whom don't know who I am. Uh, the reason why you don't know who I am is I'm a new member of the community. I've not been here for four generations, 50 years. I've been here for a whopping year and a half. I've been playing pickleball, uh, almost every weekend, reason being is to get to know members of the community. I've had quite a difficult time meeting new friends in this community, uh, especially being an outsider and not having been here for so long. Pickleball has served as an incredible mechanism for me to meet new people. When I first got there, I realized everyone is very nice. They're very cohesive. There's no skill-level discrimination. Everyone plays with each other. Everyone's very welcoming. I've, uh, been constantly reminded that younger does not mean better, uh, but I enjoy, I enjoy playing nonetheless. Uh, regarding the, the beginner's paddles, the owl, the, uh, someone called them beginner's paddles. These are owl paddles. They are over $150. They are not $20 or $30 paddles online. I bought my own, because that's how much I like playing with that paddle. And, uh, I would like to, to think of myself as not a beginner. Um, the, I've brought people from out of town that have come and played on the courts. They cannot fathom the fact that there is free equipment for people to play, including balls. Uh, there's also equipment to clean the courts, and nobody can understand how the community has come together and takes care of these courts and plays cohesively. It's incredible. Uh, I think something else that people are not thinking about is the character of the city courts. I played pickleball all of, all, all over the country. I've never seen courts that look like these, that are sitting, sitting underneath beautiful trees. The courts, although small, smaller than normal, uh, they work very well, and they're beautiful. So incredible character. Um, as far as the Saturday and Sunday's proposal, I, like most people, work Monday through Friday. Closing the courts on Sunday would mean one less day for me to play. And on the Soul Park, um, uh, concept, I've helped with a proposal for the City of Torrance in preparing, or putting in six new pickleball courts. It's expensive. It takes time. It requires a lot of effort and energy from, from the city, you know, the public. And, um, I'm happy to help in any way I can with the Soul Park initiative. Um, the City of Torrance also put in new sound barriers regarding new technology. There's some brand-new sound, sound barriers that just came out. It's padding that goes up on fences. It's proven to reduce the sound by more than 50%. This is fact. Uh, I'm happy to introduce you to the owner of that company that is putting those in, that has just completed Torrance. And finally, uh, it's been, it's been a fantastic year and a half getting to know everyone in the community, and I've enjoyed playing pickleball with everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Next we'll have Anna Falvo.
Um, so I'm Anna, and I live in the neighborhood behind Bonds, if anyone knows where that is. Um, so I just wanted to say that as a kid, there's not much in terms of entertainment in Ojai, obviously, unless you like eating. And, um, I found a sort of sanctuary in pickleball. I take all my friends to play, and we all love it. And, um, I'm newer to pickleball, but I always felt very welcomed. Um, anytime I would make a mistake, somebody would kindly correct me or give me tips and tricks on how to improve. I, I'd be sad if the courts closed, especially if Soul Park is a difficult place to get to. Um, I'd really like the courts to remain open until an official decision is made, as I would like to keep playing. Um, as a younger person in Ojai, other than being glued to my phone, my only real option is to stay active, especially in somewhere like Ojai. And, um, for me, pickleball is a really amazing option. I love playing pickleball, and it has become a focal point in mine and my brother's life. I'm sure there's a healthy compromise that everyone can come to, although I hope you'll keep the courts in the center of town, as they have become a communal cornerstone.
Thank you, Anna. Is that one more comment?
Joanne Block?
Hi. Good evening. Um, yeah, I've been sitting here all evening and listening to everyone talk, and, uh, you have to conclude that, uh, people love joy and being together. And, uh, but also, it makes me think of how many people in this room live in a house or an apartment and want peace and quiet. So I think that's a common feeling amongst us all, that we want some kind of refuge when we go home at night. And, uh, I just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, Mayor?
We've got one more. Okay, and, uh, normally, we just cut the cards off, uh, so let's just, is everybody done? Yep. Okay, good.
Uh, thank you again for holding the special council meeting. Um, I too am a new-ish comer to Ojai. Me and my husband, uh, officially moved here, uh, two months ago. First question when we moved was, was, is there pickleball in Ojai? Thank God we found it. Much to our dismay, this is crazy limited hours. We moved from Altadena, where we could play 24/7, pretty much with lights. So, a lot of people have come up here and talked about compromise, and I just want to reiterate how much Ojai pickleball players, we compromise. We've been compromising for the last month. You've been compromising for the last three years on your playing time. I too, work Monday through Friday, nine to five. I don't even get to play during the week because of the hours. So for the neighbors that say they don't have peace at night, that's not true. There's no playing. It's been dark at 4:30 since November. So there's very limited hours throughout the day to let people even play. Obviously, I'm here to ask you not to close the city courts. I agree with everyone else that said we need a solution until we have a Soul Park project, or keep them both open. Awesome. I don't think we want to see what's going to happen with the property without a plan if we close these. But also, I beg you, do not limit the hours even more. For those of us who are working Monday through Friday, nine to five, all winter, there is no time to play. You take, you give us what, one day on Saturday? Great. What about those Saturdays we have to work? If we are going to gi- give an offering for people in Ojai, please keep that at least as available as it is now, which let me tell you, and is, like, versus some communities, this is not that available. So, um, again, I just want to reiterate that this, you know, the, the culture of picker, pickleball is not happening all day, all night, because let me tell you, it's not. Um, and I just want to speak to on the welcomeness of the pickleball community in Ojai. Um, outside of my work, I have met no Ojai locals other than pickleball people. So they have become our people. Love you. Um, so the importance of this weird dumb little game that sometimes makes me super angry at times is very important to our community, obviously. Um, and again, I reiterate what people say as far as we're voting members. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, uh, Weston, any comments online?
Yes, through the direction of the mayor, we'll move on to Zoom comments. First, we'll have Heidi Williams, followed by John Wellborn. Heidi, you have the floor?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Heidi Williams. I've lived in the Ojai Valley since 1986, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 25 years. The pickleball, um, there is no denying that pickleball is a wonderful sport for people, um, both socially and physically, um, but not in our backyard. It is noisy, not just the balls and the paddles, the people, the traffic, the lack of street parking. They want to bring tournaments, and people from LA come up. And, I mean, we bring all our neighbors. It's so much fun. It is fun, but it's not fun for the people that live in this community. And there are more than just a few houses on one street. This is a neighborhood, next to a beautiful garden that used to have people growing flowers and veg- next to a beautiful garden that used to have people growing flowers and vegetables and spending time sitting and meditating. It's a quiet place. It used to be. I also want to say to the pickleball people, you cannot compare the encampment with pickleball. The encampment is a humanitarian thing. It, pickleball is your entitlement. You feel like you should be able to play there. And it is a beautiful place, but it is not for a neighborhood. It is making us nuts. I can go in my backyard to garden and I hear pickleball. I stand at my window in the front of the house and do dishes and I can hear pickleball. That it's, I can't believe you're going to reconsider this. They have a solution and that is Soul Park. Please do not reconsider closing this court tomorrow. And the hours are not, 30 minutes really? And Sundays, they play on holidays. You know, when friends come over, there's no street parking past the garden on South Ventura Street. So where, you know, people have to park way far away if it's totally crowded at the corner. So please, please, don't reconsider this. Spend the energy in Soul Park. That's where the energy has to be. And, you know, just saying that there are just a couple of us, that is so rude because there are plenty of us. And of course, we're not going to compare to the hundreds of people that want to play pickleball.
Thank you, Heidi.
Next we have John Wellborn, followed by Alan Bell. John, you have the floor. John, I see you've unmuted. Please proceed. John, you've unmuted. We'll give you one last call before we move on. And we'll move on. Alan Bell, you now have the floor.
Good evening, Councilman. Alan Bell, live on East Aliso, next to Sarzoti. I just wanted to approach this from a different angle in that I too live next to a Ojai public park whose hours are not limited, whose activities that happen all day, every day. And last week we had the lights left on overnight from Thursday to Friday. If we set this precedent that neighbors can limit the hours that happen, I don't know what would prevent me from issuing that same statement and would constrain to the park that I live next to that has lights, that has activities, that has activities that have impulsive sounds. Basketball would have an impulsive sound. Softball also has an impulsive sound. I'm just afraid that this can of worms of having a public park with limitations that are separate for different activities is not a good way to go. And I think keeping everything open and accessible is the way to go. But I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Mayor, we'll give Mr. John Wellborn one more opportunity, just in case there's any technical issues. John Wellborn, you have the opportunity? It appears he's unmuted, but unable to speak. Mr. Wellborn, if you'd like to submit a written public comment, we can surely get that to council and staff and we'll move on.
Okay, so that's it, Weston?
No more raised hands.
All right, well, that concludes public comment. Thank you, everyone. Let's take a very brief break and then we'll be, we'll be back for discussion. I'm sorry. Did, did we miss anyone? I just heard some. I'm sorry, everybody. We have one more public comment, a card that did not get received. Can we go ahead and do that? Weston, no?
Absolutely, Mayor.
I would have just let it go, but I'm, I think the exception here. I do not live inside the city limits. I do not play pickleball at this time, but maybe I will. The reason I'm up here is because a few things that I've listened to. First of all, the doctor part, my doctor said pickleball is good compared to tennis because of my age and my back and everything else. But there are a few other things. I've been here in this area for over 15 years. Go to the dog park at Soul Park. My sister was a teacher at Villanova Prep, so I've been coming over here for, you know, since the eighties. Okay, the parking is not free at Soul Park. It's not a big deal, but it's not free. There is no public transportation to, to Soul Park. That may be a limiting factor for some people, especially the young lady who was here earlier. She said that may be a factor for her. Okay, I didn't, I've been going with my dogs at Dog Park for I don't know how many years. And I did notice the difference when they started playing pickleball. But you know, it was really kind of nice because prior to that, most of the time, the courts were empty. There was no noise, but you know, growing up in New Jersey, we went to the park every day and we had something to do there. What's a park without noise? I'm sorry, but that's what it's there for, you know? And I do, you know, I enjoyed seeing the people there, like I said, with my dogs and even though I don't play the game. Hopefully I'll play the game soon, talk to some of you, but anyhow, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will take a very brief break and then we'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We are back. We do have one more public comment that had some technical issues, so let's give it one more attempt.
Yes, Mayor, we're going to give Zoom attendee John Welborn the opportunity to speak again. John, are you there?
I am.
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Very good. Thank you. My name is John Welborn. I'm a resident of Ojai for over 25 years. And in the recent August 2023 council meeting, Sousa Francina actually said as a compromise, and I read the transcript also, that she would never shut down the courts, the city courts, until there was a viable alternative for players to play. Now, I know she's, I love her because she's an environmentalist, animal rights person, and I know her to be a woman of her word. But I think she might have forgot that she promised the people of Ojai that she would not close down the courts. So I think that until we have alternatives that we can go play, I think that you should keep the city courts open, please. Until Soul Park, you know, pickleball paradise is available. Right now, pickleball paradise is just on paper, and obviously, the hundreds of people that play pickleball can look at the picture and think that's cool. But it's not really going to do us any good until we can actually have a place to play. I believe Soul Park is a wonderful place to play, but please, like you stated before, please keep the courts open until we have a viable alternative for all these people to play. I know Sousa is a woman of her word. I hope that she remembers what she said. And now, if we would have voted on this before, the courts would have stayed open. But now it looks like we need a fourth person to keep it open. So I keep hearing that the pickleball players don't really care about the homeowners. That's just not true. Everybody I know has bought $150 rackets. They're doing everything they can. This is not a group of people that does not care. They care tremendously. And they've been doing everything they can. Greg has been just unbelievable as far as trying to keep the noise down. People are doing everything they can. So whatever we have to do, please keep the courts open until we actually have a place to play. Pickleball paradise is basically just a pipe dream until we can actually have people playing on those courts. And I know that'll be a great thing. And I just think that's a compromise because originally Sousa said the compromise would be to keep the courts open until we find a place to play. So please, let's keep those courts open until we find a place to play. I appreciate everybody listening. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, John.
I'm going to respond, John Welborn.
Microphone, please.
Sorry. John Welborn, I don't know if you can hear me, but I actually brought your trans, your comment and the transcript of what I said that you so kindly provided with me. And I will address it when we get to item C.
Great. Thank you. All right, we will move on to discussion, and I would like to thank our supervisor, Matt Lavier, for being here. We really are grateful for your attendance, participation, and help. And I, Matt has a couple relatively youngish daughters, so who would like a tucking in, I think. So, Council, if you have any additional questions or comments for Supervisor Lavier before bedtime.
Don't you want to see what happens? Have a good night.
Sticks, and thank you. My daughter says thank you as well. No, I just, I think I'll just leave it with, you know, whatever the council decides. Just know that we're here as a county that will expedite this process as much as possible. We'll make it a priority. Coulter had to leave, but he agrees. Our planning staff's right. We're all kind of standing ready to get direction from what the city wants to do. And whatever it is, just know we'll make it as quick as a process as possible. And you have, you have that assurance from, from the county perspective.
Thank you so much, Matt. And Coulter had a tuck-in too, so he.
Yeah, we both have, yeah, we both have 10-year-olds, so, yeah.
Wonderful. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, we will move on to council discussion, and the suggestion is to do two motions. So how about if we discuss A and B first? Have a motion on that, and then we will move on to C. So let's, at this point, just look at A and B and as a reminder. A is an update on the Soul Park MOA, and an update on, and B is Soul, update on Soul Park pickleball programming. So who would like to begin?
Well, I, I could actually make a motion with some help.
Wonderful.
Okay. I would like to empower the, the city manager to work with our wonderful public work interim Public Works Director, Lindy Palmer, and also work with any citizens that have been working on this, such as the Soul Park Pickleball Group and any other groups or citizens that are familiar with the situation at Soul Park, that there's some collaboration. And then, I might be a little bit getting ahead of myself, but I want to empower you to, to, to do the Soul Park, to, to do the agreement with the county. Am I saying that right? I want you to, and I, I, I've met with you, and I have confidence that you'll expedite the process. Thank you.
Wonderful. Is there a second? I'll second it with a friendly amendment. So I also, I agree, direct staff to negotiate with the county and to begin construction as soon as possible. And then also, I'd also like to direct staff to come back to council with preliminary estimates for time and cost of that project.
Yeah, the timeline. And, and I don't know if this is appropriate time to bring it up, but can you, can you bring back clarity for the public about the fees? Because my understanding is that it's $30 if you're a year, if you're a senior citizen, so that the public doesn't continue to feel that there's a $5 charge every time they play pickleball. We can, all those details, you can work out with the county.
I believe we, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may. I think we can answer the fee question now, and we can certainly come back if this motion passes with what's requested. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I can speak to, to the cost of the annual permit at the parks right now. So if you're, if you're over 60, it's $30 a year. If you're under 60, it's $60 a year. If you have a second, and that's per vehicle, so you identify your vehicle, license plate number, et cetera. If you have a second vehicle that may be entering the park, it's an additional $12 a year.
Thank you, Lindy.
It's really good.
It's very good. It's a very good deal. It really is.
Just, there are, if you don't have an annual pass, which of course, everyone would have an annual pass, but do you know, can you just explain the cost for that as well?
It's $2 a day, Monday through Friday. Saturdays and Sundays, it's $5.
Great, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any council discussion before vote? Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Whitman?
So.
Microphone, please.
My, I mean, the MOU is, as it exists, is kind of a non-starter for me. And I did spend time talking with James Vega about it, and I just wanted to make sure that your framework is not like overly biased by what exists there. I would view the direction to be more specifically towards addressing pickleball in particular, and how to expeditiously improve and expand the number of courts that are out there. And I think that we should also talk with the county about a potential program where if somebody can demonstrate that it is a hardship to pay the $30 or $60, that there's a, that there's a program for, maybe in the, in the case of the city, if it's a city resident. We have a criteria that they meet. There's a program like that in the courts where if you're not able to pay the fees to be in court, you have to demonstrate some level of, you know, your financial ability and then, and then your excuse so that you're not prevented from engaging in the courts. No pun intended.
Yeah.
And I guess, so I guess I would make a friendly amendment that we, that we, that we direct the city manager to focus on courts, on the ratio of the pickleball courts. Maybe that, maybe that was already in the motion.
Well, also, it's what the city manager stated at the beginning of the meeting, what his focus was, his priority was going to be. But you're correct, that's what we want. Yeah.
Yeah.
Through the mayor, if I might.
Oh, sorry.
Through the mayor, sorry. Pardon me. I just want to make clear, I understand the, this motion, if it moves forward, and the, just for clarity, I, I always saw the MOA as just a jumping off point, and I really didn't even go through it that clearly because it was obvious it was for a different purpose than what we thought we were going to be discussing tonight, in my view. I think that's a separate item for a later date.
And then my final comment is that I, I like the idea of the city manager taking the lead, but I know that there's been a lot of work done already by community members. And I would want them to be incorporated in, including new members of the, including new members of the community that may want to participate, to the extent that it doesn't drive you crazy. And you can.
It's in the motion. It's in the.
It is in the.
Yeah, it's in the motion.
Okay. Any other council member rule? Yep.
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate that I also agree that the MOU does not have to be a starting point. I mean, you know, there's no reason to even, I mean, you can discuss not having it as a starting point, but that's probably the extent of what you want to do with the MOU. And I do also agree, to the, to the extent that, that you find it reasonable, the, the addition and the contributions of the community. I don't know how you would work that, but not let it, you know, impede progress, which I'm sure you wouldn't. I would also be willing, as a council member, to work with you on this as I go to Soul Park every day and, and watch the pickle, watch the paddle tennis players and the pickleball players and, you know, the whole park. So I love Soul Park. It's my favorite park in Ojai, so I would be willing to work with you on that. And just as a mention, we have talked, as have other council members, about a larger vision. But I do want us to ex, to expedite the courts, and then we can think about the larger vision, but I don't want that left behind because I think it's an amazing opportunity. And when you start negotiating with the county, you're going to have to have that in mind, like what the end goal is, is not just these courts, but there is, you know, a greater vision that we're talking about, that the county shouldn't be aware of sooner rather than later, so that there's no, you know, sort of backtracking on what was agreed. So that, that's my only thing. Otherwise, I am absolutely in, in support of the motion. I know that it is best practices in these kinds of situations where there is a direct relationship between the county and the city because it's a public situation, and the entities should also be the public entities involved. So with that, with that, I would support the motion.
Thank you. And I also support the motion, and I appreciate all the comments made by my colleagues, and I agree with all of them. And thank you, City Manager, Mr. City Manager, for expediting. And I think the word that I keep hearing is expedite, expedite, expedite. And I think it was really wonderful that we had our supervisor here, who clearly is ready to hit the ground running, and, and Coulter Chisholm also. So I I feel very confident that we're going to get these built very soon, so. Exciting. So we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please, Weston.
Yes, Mayor. We have a motion by Councilmember Francina, with a second by Councilmember Lang, to proceed with the recommendation of item 1A, which is to authorize the city manager to resume negotiates, negotiations with the County of Ventura Parks Department and the supervisor of Matt Lavier's office, and to direct staff to return with preliminary costs and timeline estimates. Roll call. Councilmember rule.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Did what you read back include all the nuances and comments made? It's inclusive.
The city manager heard the direction, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you, Weston. All right, we will move on to item number C, discussion of pickleball courts on City Hall campus.
And Metamare, if I could jump in through the mayor. On the question that was raised by Mr. Cliffe, on reconsideration, respectfully, I disagree that anything other than majority vote is required in this situation. Very briefly, I'll explain why, mostly for the record and the lawyers in the room. The basic rule here is that majority vote controls because it is a fundamental policy question, whether and how the city shall operate its parks and rec facilities, its City Hall campus facility, how that facility should be run, when it should be run, at what level, what level investment, and in what manner. All fundamental policy decisions subject to majority council control. The cases articulated are not applicable. Bullfield, Bullfield LLC, 85, Cal App, Fifth, 442. An irrigation district could not go outside its own rules when it was entering into commercial contracts. However, the court validated its exercise of discretion in limiting its business decisions under its own irrigation district specific statute. That case cites the other two cases. Leslie versus City of Los Angeles, 207, Cal App, Fourth, 1011. Charter cities are bound by their charter, basic rule of law. Ojai is not a charter city. Charter cities are also bound by their ordinances, if those ordinances are in compliance with the charter. Not applicable here. Posar versus City Department of Transportation, 145, Cal App, Third, 269. Caltrans must follow its own purchasing rules in managing a public bidding issue. In that case, they had published that they would use one process to, to evaluate which was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. They elected to use a different one, and the court said, no, you must follow the bidding process as was published. The headnote that was cited in the other, the later cases, oh, agency must follow its own rules, but reading the case itself, the focus was on commercial contracting and bidding and following published bidding rules. This is something different. Last, each of these cases is direct prejudicial, direct prejudice, rather, to commercial interests, not a general operations and policy question of basic city facilities. I'd cite instead, instead, the cases Madison versus City of Signal Hill, 241, Cal App, Second, 576, Pinsight, 584, and Thornbro, or Bro, versus Western Placer Unified School District, 223, Cal App, Fourth, 169, Pinsight, 200. Those two cases stand for the basic proposition that a court will not issue a writ of administrative mandate as would be needed to overturn this decision unless the petitioner shows that the agency's alleged error, including alleged non-compliant procedural rules, substantially affected and prejudicially affected the petitioner's rights. Here, there's no prejudice that can be shown. The matter is being debated in public, literally as we speak, with great community interest, with all persons present, including Mr. Cliffe and his prior client, and the matter is thus subject to majority control. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Much appreciated. All right, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the community pickleball players the courtesy of playing at City Hall until the Soul Park complex is up and running, with the stipulation that the quiet paddles, the owl paddles, be used, and that the pickleball players enforce, as is necessary, the use of those paddles and also the quiet balls. Hearing the speakers talk about, you know, working Monday through Friday and not having, you know, having only the weekends as the opportunity to play, I find that, you know, difficult in our Monday through Friday crowd, that they would not be able to play on Sunday. So for that reason. So for that reason, um, I, you know, I, I'm not, I wouldn't, I don't support that only for that reason, that there are people that work Monday through Friday. Even in Ojai. So um, um, there are a lot of things to discuss and I look forward to getting into that discussion. There were amazing uh comments and um I think all of them should be discussed from uh, from by all of us. So that's my motion. Um, and uh there it is.
Is there a second for that motion? All right, uh, motion dies. We will continue to, with discussion. Who would like to speak next?
I'll go ahead and address uh John Welborn's comment because I received the same comment multiple times. And it is true that uh back in August, when we discussed this, I did make a statement. I don't know if I'm going to read it word for word, but I did say that something, uh, I'm not gonna, I, I, you can always, I don't, yeah, no, I'm not gonna read it, read, read the whole thing. That um you know, in a moment of great enthusiasm and compassion and caring, I made the statement that the um that the, the courts at City Hall should stay open until we find another location. At that time, I did not realize that nobody wants pickleball in their backyard. We went to Matilaha, San Antonio. We went everywhere. Have you found, has any, no one here has found another location in Ojai that allows pickleball. More recently, Sarzodi Park is had, you know, if I, I don't, if, am I, if I'm wrong, how come we don't know about it? What, what?
Uh, you're wrong.
Make my statement. So we tried, we tried very hard. We went, we spoke with the, uh, the school superintendent about Matilaha. We tried to find other locations. Okay? Nobody wanted, there, there's neighbors that are too close to San Antonio evidently, they said. And um, Matilaha, we couldn't find another location. And the inner, the other thing that I did not fully grasp is that the, you know, the, the interim solution was to keep the courts open till January first. Okay? Then we extended it and even during that time, we tried to find another location. I will say, my reputation, I believe I have a reputation for being fair. I have agonized, I have probably agonized over this one issue more than any other single issue in the almost twelve years that I've been on the council. I hear you. I see your perspective. I recognize the benefits. But I am here representing the whole community, not just the pickleball community. So while I'm still processing everything that I've, I've heard and I'm not, I have uh, you know, other comments to make a little bit, uh, you know, after my colleagues have spoken. I have to consider all perspective and all um the, the, the needs of the entire community. Okay? I also want to add that um we have, I, to my way of thinking, pickleball is not a right. It's a privilege. Okay? It's a wonderful privilege and I will, I'm working, I've worked, you know, I've been in constant contact with the Soul Park Pickleball Group and other advocates for Soul Park. I've spent multiple, multiple hours on this, probably more than any other issue that has come before us, at least in recent years. I'm kind of losing my train of thought. I'm sorry, but um what was I saying? Okay, I lost my train of thought.
Circle back.
Yeah, I can sort of, I also want to, can I say just one more thing that's, that maybe will help me remember what I was going to say. I currently live, um, I lived behind Sarzodi Park. I moved there knowing that the park was there. And I knew that, you know, there's going to be times when the lights are on and there's really loud noise. And sometimes there's just the noise of children playing, but there's sports. But it was not all the time. There were long breaks in, in that noise. I want to make that point. I currently live right next to the, uh, Teramina and I'm right next to Nordoff. And I know that there's going to be many hours when the lights are on and they're playing football and the bands are playing. The noise is, and ruckus is unbelievable. But I also can count that it's going to be over. And at night I can hear the crickets and the coyotes and I know there's going to be beginning and an end. It's not every single day. And those are the things that I have, those are just a few of the things that I have to weigh tonight in my decision making process. Okay, I'll come back for you. Thank you.
Councilmember rule, Mayor Pro Tim. I mean, Lang, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna start out by saying that I didn't hear anything tonight that changed my feelings from December twelfth. I heard, I think, um, you know, very passionate uh statements about why pickleball should be um kept open at the City of Ojai courts and I still feel the same way that I did uh, a month ago, which was that there is a balancing between the right to enjoy peace and quiet in your home versus the ability to play pickleball in this particular location. And the you know, balancing, difficult as that may be is weighted for me because pickleball can be played in other locations. And I think
I'm gonna ask the people in the audience to please refrain from any comments. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Whitman, could you please direct the mic right through your mouth for our record? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in fact, you know, my, the motion I made that night to uh extend the closing date an additional thirty days was with, you know, my intent was that that would give people who wanted to have a place to play the opportunity to get somebody to resurface, potentially restrike those courts. And I assumed that thirty days was enough time, you know, to do that. Um I um, I do also believe that the statement made by more than one person that we need to have a plan for the space that was formerly a tennis court and is now pickleballs, we need to have a plan for it. Um my wife tells me that years and years ago, there were picnic tables on the uh tennis court and staff from City Hall would go there and eat their lunches. But I think, you know, probably some plan to look at that space and what's going to be there in the, you know, eventually when there is no pickleball should, we should undertake that. I, I think just to not, the plan is is probably um potentially risky. I, but I I don't equate the homeless encampment with the pickleball situation at all because you know, by a matter of law, we don't have any choice about the uh homeless encampment. We uh cannot remove campers until we have a suitable alternative. We are um working towards that. And we made great progress um just over the past weekend and in making that a better situation. Um, you know, my understanding is that the goal is for that part of the gardens not to have uh homeless. I agree with what council member Francina said in terms of the idea that there were multiple alternative locations with underused tennis courts around the city area. And the owners and operators of those courts were approached um with, would you welcome, you know, pickleball and then, and under what conditions and you know, my understanding is that they universally did not want um to you know, be, initiate pickleball activities because of the problems they would then have with the neighbors. And um I do think that the concern that money has been invested in those courts um by the local pickleball club, you know, should be acknowledged. Um, and I would uh welcome uh, if I, if I knew what that exact amount of money was, I could see the city at least considering investing an equal amount in the new pickleball facility um as a way of compensating in some way the investment that was made in those courts. Um, I would say that my biggest impression in going through this process is, you know, it's, it's a really difficult decision because we don't have any like clear guidelines about how you make this decision. Uh, more often than not, there's some type of framework. Um, and I, and I hope that the community um can understand whichever side you're on, on this issue, it's okay to disagree. It's okay that somebody disagrees with you about the best use of that court. And uh, it's okay that somebody else disagrees with you or you disagree with them. Um, that's, you know, what living in a community is about, is that there are going to be disagreements. We as a community need to get better at um addressing disagreements when they occur and I hope we can uh figure out how to do that.
Quiet, please.
Including, uh, and I, and I'm actually hoping that our new city manager is gonna help us in that process.
Councilmember Lang.
Um, did you have a question, Councilmember Francina?
Yeah, I do. Can we hold, can we all each take a turn and then we'll come back to it.
All right. So um, you know, I heard over, I, I am the kind of person who likes to find a middle ground solution for any kind of, of differences. I think I, I think I have a reputation for that um such far in my time in council. And what I have heard from both, from all sides involved is that there have been so many moves, both from the pickleball players and also from the neighbors and the, the other people who are involved in the Soul Park Pickleball Project. And so I just really want to first start by thanking you all for really working to come together. I, I think that's, that says a lot about who we are as a community. I heard several times tonight and I also, um, we received in public comments uh, the, the, the statement that sometimes the best outcome or the best decision is when both parties are a little unhappy. Um, and so uh, and so uh, you know, I, I think the neighbors have waited for a long time for, for years for this to reach some sort of resolution and for them to feel heard. Um, and, and at the same time, I think uh, having, I think that Soul Park isn't quite ready. And um, and that was one of the reasons why I voted against this in the last meeting, against closing the city courts. Um, we heard tonight that there's some hope that it's going to, it's not going to take as much, that, that it could, it's manageable, that we have county support, that we are going to move forward with this. I think the neighbors have lost a little bit of faith in us as a city to be able to move forward because it has taken so long. But what I'm hearing tonight that's different than I've heard in the past is, first of all, uh, our interim public works director, Lindy, is on board. We have a new city manager. We have um Carl, who has been incredible in getting us to this point. So we have a lot of support. So I would be in favor of keeping the courts open until Soul Park is, is ready and limiting the play. And here's this, here's a possibility. One of those is that Sarzodi has pickleball play on Saturdays. Um, you know, perhaps taking Saturdays, Monday, I, Mondays, like picking a few days of the week where there is a reduction in play. So again, making both parties uncomfortable for a short period of time. Um, and while we are doing that, then in that time, we can envision, uh, as Tisha said, um, we can envision what we want the courts to be. I think that's going to be really important because I don't think any one of us wants to see the aesthetic nature and, and getting the Green Coalition involved with this because they have that master plan and they've done all of this uh, community organized participation. I, I think that there, I think that, that it, it, we're, we're, we're not ready. And I, um, the neighbors are all giving me a stare right now, but I, I think there are, I would just hate to there are so many um, community benefits to pickleball. And, and so I would be, I would be in favor of a plan that would make everybody a little bit uncomfortable for a short period of time as we expedite the Soul Park Pickleball Project.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank all of my colleagues for the comments that have been made so far. And I also want to thank everyone who has written in letters. Um, I've read every single letter and uh, I really appreciate all of the, the input and the information and and also, you know, we love pickleball. It's clear. Everybody loves, I love pickleball. I'll just speak for myself. And I love hearing about the psychological, the mental, the physical um benefits and the community. It's a beautiful thing. So I just, I, I want to put it out there that we, I want to support that in any way we can at Soul Park. Because I still feel that we need to respect the minority. Uh, we need to treat neighbors as we would want to be treated. And I think most of us would agree that we don't want to, you know, our, our homes are a place of peace and refuge and we want quiet there. I'm, I would say almost all of us and almost all of us don't want to live next to a pickleball court because we want that quiet and peace. Um, and I think it's good to remember that this was a trial project that previous council before my time, um councilmember Francina was on the council at that time, voted. And at that time, almost four years ago, none of these issues, people didn't know about that. If you Google pickleball, there's so many lawsuits now and issues all over the United States in every community. So it's no one's fault. Nobody knew that this was going to happen, unintended consequences. And it was a trial project to see how it would go. And of course, clearly it went well because you all love pickleball so much. It didn't go so well for the neighborhood. And so I think, I think if all of us could get on board with the fundraising, to engage in the fundraising, I'm ready to write a check to wherever it is. Let me know. And um, and also to keep in mind that in two thousand and ten, the tennis community got together and raised almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, the tennis club, the civic and private donations with the Ojai Valley Civic Association to fund the lower livy courts. And they did it, you know, relatively quickly as far as I know. And um, so I think we could all get behind that and get a group effort to get the funding and get things going. And and I think it's really, once again, to treat the neighbors as we would all like to be treated. And I also agree that we need to have a plan for the space once it's empty. So I would I would stick to my original vote on December 12th that we we close them and work really hard to get those courts open. So let's take we're going to take turns. So I don't even know where to begin. There are two neighbors that have consistently for three years, two neighbors. It's two neighbors and someone who's concerned about the parking and the noise. It's it's two neighbors. And yes, they've gotten together a group and they put together a very nice proposal. But it's two neighbors. And this is a public park. It's a it's a public park. I don't even so so that's my first thing. It's not the neighborhood. It's two neighbors. There are eight neighbors who have written in and said it does not bother them. I don't know how you discard that when you say that we need to treat others as we would treat ourselves. There are eight neighbors who have written in and said it does not bother them and that they support the use of those courts for pickleball. One of them very clearly said, to Tisha's point, what is going to happen if not? But let's be very clear, they are incredible lobbyists. They are really good at what they do. They actually have probably said there are no courts available. At, you know, the 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 unified school district in fact said that San Antonio, they would let us use that San Antonio would be usable if the neighbors agreed. No one went out there except for the pickleball sound group asking the neighbors. And I'm wondering how those questions were actually phrased. If it was something like, you wouldn't want pickleball here, would you? Now, and 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 exactly that.
Point of order.
Excuse me, we're we're council discussion.
You know, we
Point of order.
Right, okay, so we know we know how that works. We know how strong a lobbying group this is. We know the connections to the council. We know all of that. When you say I've been meeting with the Sound Pickleball Group, they have one position, which is those courts have to be closed. That's their one position. Those two neighbors, their one position is those courts need to be closed. You have 200 people at a public park. You have Smith Hobson, Greg Smith Hobson, saying that that is the absolute appropriate use for those courts. And he would be willing to fund mitigation, to help with mitigation. That is the person who donated those courts. There's no way you can skew the numbers. Two people, two neighbors. And the person leading that is an investor with property there who worries about her investment, the value of her investment. So it behooves her to get out there. Now, we just really need to be honest about what's really going on here and how strong a lobby this has been and who they have talked to on this council and who they haven't talked to on this council. So there's there's not a way not to point that out. And as far as finding other places to play, we found another place to play. All we're asking, all that these people were asking was a transition period to go from one place to the other. Right? And as far as, I mean, it it just kind of goes on and on and on as you as you peel back the layers of all of this. These courts were handed to the pickleball players. They were they were they were handed them and said, you can play here. The city, over the three years, has approved the pickleball players building a fence, the mitigation efforts, the repaving. The city has never taken the position that that these courts were not to be used for the community. And secondarily, there is no noise ordinance for PL zone, which is public lands. This is a park. So I asked I asked Louis, I asked Luis, what what about Sarzati? So he gets complaints from neighbors at Sarzati that there are too many kids in the playground during the summer program. One neighbor complains incessantly. Are we going to close the summer program at Sarzati because one neighbor complains that there are too many kids? There wasn't a summer program when that neighbor moved there, but there is now. Right? Another neighbor complains at Sarzati because the guys playing football or soccer, the guys playing soccer, make too much noise. Are we going to close down Sarzati because it makes too much noise? Keep in mind, this is a public park. It's a public park. It's not a private land. It is a public park surrounded by a parking garage, a police station, City Hall. You know, this that's that's what this is this is surrounded by. And we have not, I'm I'm sorry that Councilman Whitman has not heard anything different. I'm sorry that he didn't hear the fact that we're using quiet paddles and quiet balls and it does decrease the noise by 50%. You can't hear it like you can for the longest time. The the whole argument was it's the ping ping. It's not the decibels. It's the ping ping. It's the hertz. Well, now that the hertz isn't there, you know, it's the noise of the players. It's, you know, it it's just, there is no compromise with these two neighbors. It is no pickleball courts. That's that's it. That's that's the only solution that is possible. And that is not a compromise. And, you know, the fact that even we believe that there was an MOU that expired. There wasn't an MOU that expired to close the courts. It was just an MOU that expired whether or not those hours would be maintained and the green paddles would be enforced. There was no, it was not, it was not the agreement with the lawyer that the courts would close. That was never the agreement. It was never the agreement. And finally, the threat of a lawsuit is laughable. This is, the sound has been decreased by 50%. It's a public park. The decibels are no louder than the cars that pass in front and the hertz are no longer an issue. So I I I'm asking this council to reconsider as a transition period to allow the community to play. To somebody's point, we now have a staff in place who can actually expedite this, who actually has direction to move this forward. It can be done. It can be done quickly. I don't see why we would disenfranchise so many people. And it's great that we love pickleball, you know, all that is great. But you are shutting down these people. This council has decided to shut down these people. So that is what is overwhelming in here. It's not that we love pickleball and thank you so much for working together. And everything is great. It's you're closing those courts. And that is what nobody, except for five people in this room, want to hear. Oh, sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven.
I'm going to call a point of order respectfully. And 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 I I just want for the rec I want to clear the record for a moment because I I don't want it to be a precedent that we that we on the council call out individuals who stand up and have the courage to make public comments or to write in about and voice their concerns about any subject at all. And so I just want to clear the record that it wasn't just two neighbors, that there were neighbors who were speaking on behalf of other neighbors who were afraid to speak. And that and and so there's, you know, there's, there's a I think a lot of the rhetoric is there are there's a small group of neighbors and a big group of pickleball players. But, you know, what we see with any 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 policies, policies are are designed to protect the interest and many policies are designed to protect the interests of minorities. And fortunately for many of us, those policies are in place despite the fact that there isn't a large representation. So I just wanted to clear that and and that way, you know, that's out there. The other thing, too, is that, you know, I was speaking with someone who was very involved in 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 getting the the courts, working with the previous council to to have the courts paved and reconditioned. And it was always the understanding with those courts that they were temporary, that they were never meant to be permanent courts. And and that's because we didn't know about the noise at that time and 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 there were some concerns. And and so and so I just wanted to say that that is that that there were concerns even at that time that that this would be, this could be an issue. And I don't know, Lindy, if you wanted to speak to any more of that or if you if you had any more information about that, or Susan does. But I just wanted to clarify those two points.
Oh, do you want to say anything? You don't have to. Yeah. Okay, okay, okay. Okay. Councilmember Francina.
So I I I think I have four points I want to make. And in addition to that, I would like to have a discussion amongst us about Councilwoman Rachel's possible compromise situation. Okay, but that's separate from my other points. May I ask an honest question of Councilwoman Leslie Rule?
Always, Susan, and and I will tell you the truth. Let's avoid any cross talk.
Okay, my question, and it's a question of of Councilwoman Leslie Rule and the leaders of of the pickleball group. If are you willing to put all of your energy into Soul Park during if we do have a transition period and it would be, to my way of thinking, very limited? You know, fair to both, you know, like, you know, the neighbors will be partly happy and and unhappy and you will be, the players will be a little bit unhappy. That's that's called compromise. I'm willing to consider that only only if the leaders and including Councilwoman Leslie Rule is willing to let go of the of having pickleball at the current location. And then I'm going to explain why I feel that way. So that's my question, whether you want to answer it or not, but that is
Can I answer that, Mayor? I mean, it was a direct question.
Can you make it quick, though?
I absolutely can. I will put 100% of my efforts into getting Soul Park built as quickly as is possible to do. I will advocate to every pickleball player I know that we need to move forth with as quickly as we possibly can. I will work with the city manager and the assistant city manager and the interim Public Works Director to understand, to explain, and to make that happen. I will be firmly, fully, 100% committed to getting Soul Park been run as soon as I possibly can. Thank you, Councilmember. Well, can you? But we are in discussion. We're not in a conversation. So can you finish making your comments and then?
Yes, she didn't answer my question.
She can the next time she speaks. How's that? Yes.
I know, but she didn't answer the question. The critical question is, are you willing to let? Because we there are, I believe, there the council majority supports the ultimate vision of a quiet park. Okay, it's a historic site. We can go into that. Are you willing to be an advocate for that and let go of the current location? That is really my question.
We can circle back to the next comment. Can you finish your comment and then we'll move on?
I almost get the least amount of time. I swear to God.
Actually, I think if we timed it, I doubt that.
Okay. Okay, so my I I I I want to address the the issue of money. I was on the council back in August 2019 when the the current city council allocated $15,000. Ten staff actually said 10,000, but we we upped it to 15,000. So I wanted to, I've often heard that this has not cost the city a penny and that's absolutely not true. So it's I think it's good for the public to hear what this has actually cost the city. And I believe staff is prepared to answer that question.
Mayor, would you like that addressed?
Did it cost 15,000?
So we've tabulated the costs as we are aware of them and I'll just list them off. It's 15,300 for the sound wall construction, 13,250 for the sound wall study, 9,300 for the resurfacing improvements, for a total of $37,850 of city investment. However, I should point out that we received approximately $12,000 in community donations that supported the new netting, court striping, and the quiet pickleball equipment.
And in addition, there's staff time, of course.
We don't tabulate staff time. We don't have cost centers for activities. Yeah.
All right, and then you know, I want, I would just like to make a brief synopsis of what the this estate property means to those of us who know who know the history and there could be differences of opinion. I have lived in Ojai, I can't believe it myself, for almost 70 years, 68 years. And I I remember the property as a as a as a quiet property. And I'm going to quote make take some quotes from our noted local historian Craig Walker, who is on the Historic Commission, but these comments he made independently. They don't come from the commission as a whole. But I think it's important to recognize this as we go through our decision-making process. The Smith Hobson Estate is a city of Ojai historic landmark. The landmark includes both the historic buildings and the grounds of the surrounding 8.79 acre estate. Given the high level of integrity of the site, the consultant who evaluated the property deemed it eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. The landmark's historic integrity includes its visibility from South Ventura Street. The consultant wrote, "The setting of the home is intact within a wooded area of mature trees with an ample setback from Ventura Street." And then one more, a couple more paragraphs. "The integrity of the historic landmark will be significantly compromised if tall, 15 sound barriers, as many people have proposed, are erected around the original tennis courts. They would interrupt and block views of the historic buildings and its setting along South Ventura Street, the original entrance to the town of Norda. They would be an intrusion on the property that would jeopardize its character and historic significance." As a residential estate, the Smith Hobson property conveyed a quiet tranquility consistent with Ojai in the 1920s. The property's original tranquility is evident today, 100 years later. The City Hall Master Plan creators quickly settled on quiet, low-keyed activities for the grounds. The pickleball courts are not consistent with the atmosphere envisioned by the master plan, nor are they consistent with the quiet residential character of the neighborhood. The neighbors have been very patient about pickleball, pickleball noise, oh, pickleball, sorry, noise over the years, but have consistently urged the city to move the courts. The pickleball noise problem has been investigated nationally and does not reflect the views of only Ojai neighbors. Experts agree that pickleball courts should not be located in residential neighborhoods. And I, you know, I I resonate with this description. It doesn't mean that I'm not willing to consider a compromise. And I will, and, you know, we'll have that discussion, I guess, when it's my turn again or Rachel can initiate. Okay, so that's enough my time I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitman, any comments?
Yeah, um, I uh, I don't like that there was an effort to uh, belittle people who came out to speak. Um, I think everybody should have the right to speak at a hearing like that, and they should feel welcome and and not feel like someone's going to say that they're, you know, lying or disingenuous. I uh, you know, thought about and decided not to say what I was told, and that there were neighbors who um, felt like they couldn't come tonight because this was a hostile environment. And uh, so I will say that I, you know, pickleball has existed on the City Hall campus for a few, a few short years. And, you know, for the longest time, that whole area where the tennis courts are was part of a public demonstration garden. My wife taught composting classes there. It uh, has not been a noisy place over time. And uh, it has, that character has changed. So I'm not saying that somebody is right and somebody is wrong, but I think those are all, you know, circumstances that we have to consider. I um, in a, in addition to the idea that we've got multiple uh, underused tennis courts where they do not want to permit pickleball. Um, there are construction standards in other cities where they require pickleball courts to be at least five hundred, or in some cases, six hundred feet away from a residence. And the reason for that is because the the, those cities view the intermingling of pickleball and a residence as incompatible. Um, and it takes five hundred feet to mitigate the noise issues. I um, had thought about saying this, and I didn't, but I, you know, I guess I, I guess I will. But there's, you know, there's something going on in San Francisco right now. Um, and what happened in San Francisco is a couple of years ago, they decided that there was a huge demand and they had to build more pickleball courts. Um, so they took tennis courts at the Presidio. And I won't take the time to explain, um, you know, that neighborhood, but it's a very affluent neighborhood. But they took tennis ball, tennis courts, they restriped them for pickleball. Um, and then they went to work on building um, uh, new pickleball courts in other locations. Well, now, just recently, the courts are coming online. And um, the folks who have been playing at in the city is taking the pickleball courts offline and turning them back to tennis. But the um, the folks who are using those courts are refusing or, you know, fighting the idea that the courts are going to be retired because they want to play at that particular location. I mean, I do have a concern as Councilmember Francina's question, I think, you know, raised the issue. Is there going to be a willingness to retire the courts when we, the City Hall courts, when we have the courts built at Soul Park? And I've, you know, I I have severe concerns that 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 there will not be, that, you know, we'll go to the time and effort to build those courts and and there won't be any interest in closing the courts. But, you know, we can remain, we can, you know, see what happens. Uh, I think if somebody wants to work on a compromise, I hope that that's built into that, that there actually is going to be a retirement, retirement of those courts.
I'm going to make a few points. Um, um, we're all going through our second round here. Um, I have heard from many more neighbors than just two over the, in the last three years. And I have heard, unfortunately, that some people who support closing the courts didn't feel comfortable to come tonight and speak. Which is unfortunate. It would be, you know, even if we disagree, we need to respect other people's ability to have an opinion. Um, I think there are two kinds of parks. There's the active park and there's a passive park. Sarzati, active. Um, I would say this historically has been a passive park where people have gardened, composted. Um, kids have come, listen to the birds, listen to silence, um, and enjoy nature and the sounds of nature. Um, I think it's a great idea, given the amount of money that the pickleball group has has invested. If there's a possibility that the city could actually give that money back and put it towards funding the courts at Soul Park, I think that would be a sign of good faith. Um, and I I appreciate what you said, um, policies to protect the interests of the minorities. And in this case, it's, it is the neighbors. Um, and Park City, for example, has a ordinance six hundred feet. A pickleball court has to be six hundred feet away from a business or residence. Um, I think the closest neighbor is a hundred feet. It's just, it's just too loud. And I have walked several times by the new paddles, the playing, and I appreciate your effort. I really do. It's still loud. It's still too loud. And also, when you have thirty people having fun, I mean, those are, those are, that's joyful noise. On the other hand, you wouldn't want to, most of us would not want to live right next to that. Um, so I, I would promote um, continuing, as we voted on the twelfth, to to close it and get going as soon as possible. That said, um, all of us have had two comments. Is there someone who would like to put a motion on the table that we could discuss? And then we can have more discussion. Just uh, is anybody ready to make a motion at this point?
I'm not ready because I want to still discuss.
Yeah, I haven't actually.
Okay, all right. Yeah, Councilmember.
Well, my first comment was just a motion, so I'm I'm going to say that that really wasn't a comment. I mean, it was just a motion. Was four words. Um, I would like to find a compromise here. I don't see how, as a community, we can just unilaterally decide not to find a compromise. There is a compromise to be had. I think we can work on it. Um, uh, you know, I I don't really want to comment everything except for Craig Walker, can have Craig Walker's opinion. The descendant of the people who, the grandson of the people who donated this property, who played on this property, did not agree with him. Um, agree, thought that, and and we have two comments to that effect. Thought that this, that the, that particular tennis court area would, is a wonderful place for pickleball. So, you know, I I mean, does one negate the other? I don't know. Um, you know, is it possible to build a foot, a fifteen-foot fence that can then be dismantled at the time that there's a transition? Um, we haven't even investigated, um, I think the gentleman from Torrance said that there's new technology. Um, we haven't even investigated that. That's something that can go on simultaneously with the transition to Seoul. Um, and as as far as quiet parks and loud parks, we now have a homeless encampment in this park. This park will not be a quiet park for years to come. That's, that's just a fact. Um, and uh, you know, whether or not I agree that there are quiet parks and loud parks is irrelevant. We have a homeless encampment here. As many, as many people who have spoken about, there are many more people who speak about the noise of the homeless, unsheltered encampment. So noise is not going to go away from here. And to everyone's point, the best policing always is community policing. The best community policing is eyes and ears of the public on the space. That's why you have communities that walk neighborhoods. You have people with eyes and ears on those courts in this park for seven hours a day, watching and making sure that that at least in a certain radius, everything is is okay. And they do that, and and that will go away. Um, so those are my, those are my um, my comments. And and I do hope that we can figure out a compromise, whether or not it is, you know, Saturday, which is the only uh, available day for Sarzati, um, you know, and it is a compromise because people like to play outside, you know, and not go into, you know, an indoor court, um, really. I mean, that's why people, that's why people play outside. I mean, I played tennis for years, indoor and outdoor. And, you know, indoor was never even comparable to playing outside. Um, so I am hoping that this council can find some, some compromise for a transition. I don't know if potentially um, any of staff have any recommendations or thoughts on how this might happen? Or is it, you know, should we just try to think about it? You know, and also, the idea of the Presidio, which, by the way, I played at, I I lived four blocks from those Presidio courts in Julius Con. Um, if, just as you can close these courts now, you can close these courts in three months. If you can do it now, you can do it in three months. If no one's going to do it now, and no one's going to do it in three months, you know, what makes you think they're going to do it now? In other words, this community has never said that we will not abide by that. And in fact, they have over and over and over said, please reconsider. The assumption is that they will abide by it. Um, you know, I don't know if you know them, but they're actually law-abiding people. They're not outlaws. So that having been said, I'm hoping that we can work towards a compromise of some sort.
Is there uh, someone who would like to put a motion on the table that we can discuss?
Question, actually. If, this is something that we've already voted on. And would this be a motion for a reconsideration? If so, then then there would be certain parameters.
Then Mr. City Attorney?
No, my advice is that this is a new question, so we don't have, the reconsideration rules apply during the course of the meeting under Rosenberg's and under the authority I cited before, plus Government Code Section five four nine five six, which allows three members of council or the mayor to set the agenda for a special meeting without qualification. This is just majority vote.
Okay, all right. Well, is there a council member who'd like to make a motion?
We haven't discussed if there is appetite for any kind of compromise, but it's your turn, or should I?
Well, if we make a motion, then we can talk about the potential.
Well, I I can't, I don't have a motion.
I could, I could make a motion. Um, I would make a motion that we keep the courts open uh, for, until Soul Park um, is ready to play, but no more than six months. Um, and that we reduce the hours of play, eliminating Saturdays. And and I'm trying to think this, so that we, that we eliminate Saturdays because there is an alternative to play on Saturdays. And um, that we reduce the hours by thirty minutes on the rest of the days.
Okay, Weston, do you want to repeat that, just so that we're all clear?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah.
And no second I heard so far.
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Lang to keep the courts open until the Soul Park concept comes online or completed. Uh, no more than six months to remain open here at City Hall Campus Courts and eliminate Saturday usage. And reduce the hours, as recommended by the staff report, by thirty minutes.
Thank you. All right, is there a second for that motion?
In the spirit.
Uh, just once, is there a second for?
Yeah, I'm going to second it. Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry. No problem. Uh, I was just going to preface it by saying, in the spirit of compromise, which I believe is our only way through this, I second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, uh, any discussion on that?
Oh, yep.
I was going to make a substitute.
Okay, go ahead.
My substitute motion is to close the courts at least three days. And I've originally had in mind Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And unfortunately, the days that the neighbors need peace and quiet are the same days that the working person can play. Okay, but I think the neighbors are priority. I don't know that those three days need to be written in stone. Staff could discuss, you know, if the motion passes. But in my mind, it should be Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Monday is often a holiday. And I am sorry that that's, you know, that's going to be a, a, a problem for uh, people that work. But again, the neighbors have have some, you know, they they need their weekends after three or four, three or four years. Yes, but the neighbors, the neighbors have a right to the quiet enjoyment of their home.
Could, would you like, would you like to offer that as a friendly amendment to the motion?
Uh, to, however, I.
I would accept, I was like, I would accept that.
And then, uh, the hours, um, what, what did you say about the hours?
So procedurally, before we, if I could jump in, Mayor and Council. To do it as a friendly amendment, the maker of the motion and the seconder must accept it. Based on prior commentary, I'm not sure the seconder would accept that. Thus, if it's not accepted as a friendly amendment, it can be done as a substitute motion.
Can I make a friendly amendment to the friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Actually, my motion's incomplete.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It also includes a firm stop date, whether Soul Park is finished or not. And um, you know, I I'm, I'm.
What is that date?
Recommendation. It was six months.
Well, that was in the motion.
Yeah.
My suggestion was six months. Okay. Whichever comes first. So would, with the completion of Soul Park or or July for first, or six months, whichever comes first.
I I would do four because if we're really motivated, surely in four months, the courts that are almost playable can be playable. And, you know, nobody, listen, we live in the most beautiful, that, one of the most beautiful valleys in the world. It is, you know, we should be grateful for what we have. No one, this is not a life and death matter. No one's going to die if you don't have one more month to pay pickleball, and the neighbors deserve peace and quiet.
So this is a substitute motion?
Yes, four months.
Okay, that, could I make? Right, could I make a um, a, a friendly amendment? Um, also in the spirit of compromise, because people who work the weekends, but even more than that, it's that Sunday is when families come to play. And there is no other sport that all, that families come and play. And that's when they come. They come on Sunday. Um, they come on Sunday afternoon mostly. Um, and so to take that away from families, I think, I I've heard the superintendent of schools say many times that there is no activity that families can do anymore in Ojai, once the bowling alley went bye-bye, which, you know. Um, so if we could do a Sunday afternoon so that families could play, I think it's really important. Um, so so I, just to take away the weekends means you take away the ability of families to come and play. And to me, that's, that's really, really important. Uh, and perhaps we could do five months between four and six. Um, and uh, you know, I guess that would be, we're pretty much through the ability to compromise anymore. So Mr. City Attorney, can you just track us back to the motion and where we are, please?
Yeah, so as I understand it, the the motion, the main motion is to keep the City Hall courts open until the earlier of the Soul Park courts being open or six months, so August first, without any play on Saturdays, and to reduce the hours by thirty minutes on the other days of play. That was motion by Councilmember Lang, seconded by Councilwoman Rule, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Francina.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Francina did a substitute motion to instead close the City Hall courts three days, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Um, and the same, the City Hall courts to close entirely in the earlier of Soul Park courts being online or four months, so June 1st. And Councilmember Rule has requested a, it's unclear if that got a second. Councilmember Rule has requested a friendly amendment and compromise to instead close City Hall courts two days a week, Saturday and Monday and Sunday morning, leaving play allowed Sunday afternoon and still close the City Hall courts entirely when the Soul Park courts are online or five months, which would be July 1st. Um, whichever is first of those two.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
So.
We're asking a question about hours.
Right, but we do need a second for that motion.
So the friendly amendment to Councilmember Francina's substitute motion would need to be accepted by Councilmember Francina.
I, I, I accept.
And Councilmember Lang.
Sunday afternoon. I, I, I rather like that, but I, I think it should be, you know, maybe it depends on the time of year. So for now, it's winter and, uh, it's cooler. So, uh, you know, something like one o'clock to four o'clock, you know, three hours, three hours on Sunday afternoon.
Okay, is there a second for Councilmember Rule's motion?
But I don't wanna change from the four months. That's a firm, hard stop.
Okay, Councilmember Lang seconded it. Could we have a, a refresh of that motion, please?
So.
And, and, and with the explicit understanding that, you know, we all cooperate, we let go of, of this, of the city. And I've not, not yet heard Councilwoman, uh, Leslie Rule actually state that she's willing to let go of that. She's kinda skirted around it. That has to be part of it.
That's not enforceable. I, I have to jump in there.
Okay.
You can't prevent each of you exercising First Amendment rights to accomplish any policy goal that's a lawful policy goal.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Would you?
Got it, I do have a.
I'm happy to restate what I understand the motion, but I.
Okay.
Hey, go ahead and restate the motion.
Okay, so the, our motion, as I understand it, is to close City Hall courts two and a half days a week, closed Saturday, Monday, Sunday morning, allowing play Sunday afternoons for three hours. And to close in full when the Soul Park courts are online or five months, uh, which would be July 1st, whichever of those two is first. That's what I understand.
Is that correct?
What was that last part?
No, she said a four months.
Is it back to four months?
Four months.
Four months in four months, the maker and second.
Okay, let, let, let me think.
This is a test, Matt.
Very smart, April, May, so courts close June 1st, June 1st.
Four months, yeah, June 1st.
Okay, all right. Um, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Whitman, you have a comment?
Yeah, um, actually, I wanna propose a friendly amendment because this is something that a neighborhood, uh, resident suggested would be, uh, you know, a, a big deal if play were to continue. And that's to reduce the number of courts and play because that adds significantly to the volume of the sound to have four courts rather than two. And I would, I would vote for it if we had that reduction.
Will you accept that?
I, 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 you know, I have to think about that. What, what do my colleagues think?
Well.
I don't wanna make the motion.
It's your motion.
But, but we, those of us who seconded it, I mean.
Yeah. I, I would much rather, instead of that, I would like the neighbors to have a total of three days. Uh, maybe since they're gonna have Sunday afternoon, I can have another morning where they can enjoy peace and quiet uh, rather than reducing the court, the courts, the court size. I, I, I feel like reducing the court size might not, I don't understand that. I'm not equipped to accept that because I don't understand it and I don't know if it's safe. I don't know how that, I don't know that it'll lessen the number of people waiting to play or that the noise, I don't, I, I don't, I wouldn't accept that. Yeah, because I think that just people would just be waiting to play. Yeah.
Well, uh, my understanding is that, yeah, my understanding is that the, the volume of noise coming from the courts is greatest when there are, uh, so what, 16 players all playing at once because then they're all potentially, you know, exclaiming and hitting the ball all at once. So you'd reduce the number of people playing at once from 16 to eight. But I don't.
I, yes. Councilmember, yeah. Francina, are you ready to?
I would like to hear.
Okay.
Leslie knows more about pickleball than I do.
Okay, Councilmember Rule?
Yeah.
I guess from a, well, from a noise perspective, you will just have people standing around. Um, and, you know, to me, that's, it's sort of nonsensical. Um, we've made compromises, we're ready to go. I mean, who's gonna enforce that? I mean, it, it's, it, to me, it's just kind of, you know, I mean, it'd be better to have one court, you know, it'd be better to have, so I wouldn't, it doesn't make sense to me on, on a reasonable level because you would have people waiting, they would be making noise.
It doesn't.
It doesn't make sense to me. That's just my point.
Months is not that long.
It really isn't.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, we ready for a roll call? Weston?
All right, roll call. Councilmember Francina.
It's on my motion, correct? The second motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitman.
No.
Mayor Sticks.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Motion passes three to.
Motion passes. All right, thank you very much. And, um, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your comments and, uh, we are adjourned.